Anticipate. So before we go into our regular city council meeting, I'd like to ask the city attorney to report on any items that we had for closed session.
There's one reportable action. Under item one of the closed session, the council discussed existing litigation, the City of Galt versus Boys and Girls Club of Galt. In September, the city council approved a settlement of the litigation on a three-two vote. Mayor Shelton, Vice Mayor Payne, and Councilmember Claire voted in favor and Councilmembers Haynes and Meredith voting against. The settlement agreement is now complete. Although no action took place today in closed session, the Brown Act requires the reporting out of the substance of the settlement agreement when the agreement is complete. The agreement is now complete, and as part of the settlement, the city agreed to dismiss its complaints against the club and individual defendants in exchange for the receipt of property currently occupied by the club and a payment of forty thousand dollars. There is no other reportable action.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize because normally I ask the city clerk to read off the items ahead for the public. So now, sorry, we're doing it a little backwards, but I've asked Liz to read off those items that we discussed.
Okay, we had five items. Number one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Galt versus Boys and Girls Club. Number two was pulled, it was an anticipated litigation one case. Number three, conference with labor negotiator, the Galt Police Officers Association and the Galt Public Service Unit. Number four, conference with real property negotiator. And I'll read off the properties. The negotiating parties are Jason Bearman, city manager, and M&amp;Z Valley Associates, Beakman Properties, Rango Property, and A&amp;M Enterprise. And number five, employees, public employee performance evaluation, city manager.
Thank you. We will now open the regular meeting at seven fifteen, seven sixteen. If I could have the roll call, please.
Members Payne, here. Claire, Payne.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
I'd like everyone to rise for a silent prayer, a moment of silence, and remain standing for the flag, please.
I'd like to let the citizens see the flag of the United States of America, and the Republic of which is friends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and SherWest cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetricable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone under addressing council and state your name for the record.
Are there any agenda approval additions and/or any deletions?
I have a few, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Item E four, resolution suspending existing residential photovoltaic solar system permit fees. I'd like to pull that one just so we can talk about it for a second. Also, item E nine, requests for additional funds for the construction of the Lincoln Way Parking Lot Project.
E four and E nine?
E four and E nine, yeah.
And then I have a couple, one involving E nine. E six, annual activity reports, and E nine, requests for additional funds for Lincoln Way Parking. We wanted to move to the redevelopment agency consent calendar. So we'll talk about it under redevelopment agency.
Sure.
So we won't move that one to consent, we'll move that one under regular calendar.
All right. Okay, any others? None? Okay, we have a presentation.
We do have a presentation, multi-jurisdictional presentation on South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item for tonight is a presentation from, I believe, Mr. Somack, yes, he's here tonight. Just to give you an update on the HCP and where we are in the process. Mr. Somack's been back to Washington DC, making progress with electeds and agency staff back there, and I'll let him give his presentation. Thank you.
Before you start, let me explain something, because we changed some policies for council. So I noticed I had some looks from some people that were anticipating to speak. So we do the agenda approval if any council member or staff wants to move something. And then now we do a presentation, and then we'll go to public comment, and then the consent agenda items. This is something fairly new, we just started doing this. Sorry, thank you, I just wanted to bring that to the public.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I appreciate your time. I was here about, I don't remember how long ago, a while ago. And I made a presentation, and at that point, on the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. At that time, I promised to come back periodically, provide you with updates, so that as we move forward, you'll be kept abreast, at least from a very broad conceptual perspective, that I can present to you of what is occurring. And then, of course, your staff can provide you with much more detailed information as time goes on. Again, my name is Stuart Somack. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Somack, Simmons and Dunn. And I was retained by the project partners. And the project partners are noted on the PowerPoint as the cities of Rancho Cudova, Elk Grove, the City of Galt, Sacramento County, the Sacramento County Water Agency, and the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation Districts. I was retained collectively by that body to try to shepherd this HCP through the process with the goal of attempting to get it done somewhere around, which is a very elusive around. That is probably the most, or least specific around I can give you, January of two thousand eleven. So about a year from now, we are hoping to be closing in on the completion of this document. What I'd like to do is very briefly give you kind of a reminder of some of the things I mentioned before, and then go into some of the things that have happened since then. As you'll recall, and I don't know who's got the, do I have those? Want me to go like that?
Yeah.
It's just.
I mean, we don't have a.
Neither does it move, or. Okay. You can change it. Whoever is changing. Very good. As you recall, the Habitat Conservation Plan itself has been in the pipeline, in progress, for greater than twelve years. Astounding to me that it has been around that long. I have represented a lot of the public agencies in Sacramento and Sacramento County since nineteen eighty-four. And during that period of time, I've done a lot of work on various projects. And the HCP has periodically been a very important aspect. And I remember thinking, well, if we get that done, we'll be in pretty good shape with a lot of projects that need to happen in the south part of the county. And never expecting that I would have to shepherd it to completion. And the fact that it's been ongoing for twelve years indicates that there's probably some need to move forward. The reason why we have the current impetus to get it done after all this time is the Freeport Regional Water Project, a project that is a joint project between the Sacramento County, Sacramento County Water Agency, the East Bay Municipal Utility District. And it is a project to move water into what we call Zone Forty, which is areas of Elk Grove and Rancho Cudova and some of the unincorporated portions of Sacramento County. As part of the biological opinion that went into the approvals, project approvals for that project, it required Endangered Species Act, federal Endangered Species Act compliance prior to the time that water could be served to new developments. Now, that project's a fairly expensive project. Bonds have been sold, and the bonded indebtedness will come due. And unless we're able to provide water to the additional hookups or new hookups, then that bonded indebtedness will have to be borne by all of the pre-existing, the current folks that get water from that project, making it a very expensive rate-bearing component for each one of those households. And so that's the impetus. And actually, it serves as a pretty good impetus for getting this thing done. The date that that project is scheduled to come online is January two thousand eleven, and that's why, you know, that hard point in the schedule was created in order to facilitate that. And it ought to help every other jurisdiction, however, in terms of having a Habitat Conservation Plan in place that will address Endangered Species Act compliance for whatever development, infrastructural projects, whatever needs to be done within the South Sacramento HCP areas. The timing on the Freeport Regional Water Project, again, is tied to the HCP, and, or the HCP is timed to the Freeport Regional Water Project. There is a different way that one could theoretically comply, and that is each individual project, whether that be a development project, a road project, the, each individual home, you know, or development within a project. Each one of them could go in for project-specific Endangered Species Act clearance. That is a cumbersome piecemeal process that doesn't serve local agencies very well, and it certainly doesn't serve the federal agencies very well. The HCP goals, we've talked about this last time, a regional strategy for conservation areas and developed areas, predictable streamlined permitting process, defined mitigation requirements. The drafting is a cooperative effort. It includes a local agency working group or the LOG, as we've named it, which includes representatives of each one of the jurisdictions that are project partners on this effort. There's also a city-county management team, which includes the heads of the various, at the management level, the various cities, the county, the special districts that are involved in the process, and they meet monthly to make determinations with respect to how things will proceed. Next slide, please. The permitting agencies, the agencies that will provide the permit under the HCP include the Fish and Wildlife Service, the California Department of Fish and Game, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board with respect to water quality certifications, both under state and federal law. The agency staff has been working together with the project partners. We have designated teams working on all the sub-technical issues that are involved in the HCP. We have technical meetings, the last technical meeting, in fact, occurred this afternoon. And there's also policy-level engagement in the guise of a, what we call liaison team meeting, where we have representatives of all the project partners, meet with representatives of all the federal and state agencies, and we go over all the issues and attempt to make determinations on large policy issues that get then embedded in the HCP. Conservation strategy within the HCP has certain underlying assumptions. They include species, the fact that species depend on habitats. So there's a lot of focus, that's why it's called a Habitat Conservation Plan, a lot of focus on strategies associated with what species are involved and what habitats are involved in those species. And the idea is to conserve within the whole of the HCP, and this is the benefit of a multi-jurisdictional HCP, rather than focusing on, for example, only the urban development area of the City of Galt. One can look at the entire southern part of the county and take a look at the kind of conservation opportunities that are available with respect to the whole of the South Sacramento area, as opposed to focusing only on one or two small areas. Okay? There's a, certain species have been targeted, those are species of special concern. The HCP or the plan identifies the various habitat types, determine what species will be affected by loss of habitat, and determines the types and amount of habitat that will need to be preserved or conserved under the HCP. Where we are in terms of the HCP itself, that's the next slide, please, is that the first six chapters of the preliminary draft HCP have been provided to a steering committee for input. The steering committee actually includes about a hundred and fifty people, so it's a fairly large group. It includes various stakeholder groups, from environmental community to the business community, to the, to other various interested stakeholders within the agricultural community, other stakeholders within the South Sacramento area. Again, the first six chapters have been provided to the steering committee for input. Those, what those chapters cover are listed on the PowerPoint. Go to the next slide. And we're currently in the process of editing chapters seven, eight, nine, and ten. Quite frankly, these are the chapters that have most of the real significant meat on them. They include the conservation strategies themselves in chapter seven. Chapter eight deals with monitoring and adaptive management. Chapter nine includes the planned finances and economics associated with the HCP. And chapter ten, we'll talk about implementation strategies, and we'll link to an implementation agreement that is in the process of being drafted. We have received comments from the state and federal agencies on those chapters, and those are before the LOG currently, and they are being looked at, and they're getting ready for broader dissemination. Actually, some of these chapters have also been, in portions, been provided to the, to at least subcommittees of the larger steering committees, so that subcommittees of interested people have been looking at this. For example, the Biological Subcommittee, which deals a lot with the conservation strategy, has taken a look at the conservation strategies, are providing input back to the project partners so that we can then take those comments, put them back into the conservation strategy chapter, and send it out to the larger group then for comment and review. Might add that the status of these chapters, we call it is a preliminary draft. The idea is to pull in enough information, make modifications based upon public input, to then put this out as a formal draft. That formal draft will be published in the Federal Register, and we'll have then another whole set of comments that will come in from the broader public that we'll have to go through and will have to synthesize, and will have to modify the draft plan in order to move into the final. So where we're at now is the preliminary draft. This is preliminary to getting a draft that we can publish in the Federal Register. Okay, if we can go to the next slide. We have been meeting with potentially affected large landowners. There are some very large landowners out in the South Sacramento area, and a lot of large development opportunities out there. They create some unique and interesting challenges, and as a consequence, we've been meeting with them and then meeting with them, as well as with the state and federal agencies to try to work through the footprints of some of these larger projects, take a look at preservation and conservation strategies and how they work with the larger HCP, so that as we develop a map that will go with the HCP, it'll be one that will comprehensively look at the whole of the South Sacramento areas. The other large area that we're working on, along with our economic subcommittee, is the economic plan. Economics, financing, how we're going to pay for all of this stuff is of critical importance. Many Habitat Conservation Plans across the country, and even in this region, have failed, at least the first time through, because the economic and financing plan has not been sufficient. And as a consequence, we're spending a lot of time. That time is spent in terms of trying to make it financially feasible. That is, the folks that will have to pay for fees associated with the plan have got to afford it. And so as a consequence, we're testing it on that level. On the other hand, there's got to be enough money built into it in order to pay for the things that need to be paid for. Those things include land acquisitions in terms of preservation, as well as the mitigation and the monitoring that needs to be done as part of the process in order to facilitate whatever projects are going to be supported under the HCP. Next slide. Now, one of the real challenging aspects of what we've undertaken is the fact that the area, most of the South Sacramento, I shouldn't say most, but a great deal of the South Sacramento HCP's critical habitat is vernal pool and what we call wetted habitat. It's driven by those types of issues, and that implicates a whole different federal statutory, you know, criteria under section four oh four and four oh one of the Federal Clean Water Act, and its state implementing aspects. And as a consequence, one of the things we are trying to do with respect to this HCP is integrate as best we can, not just the requirements under the Endangered Species Act, but also the requirements under section four oh four and four oh one of the Federal Clean Water Act. The idea there is, if you come in and comply with the HCP, you ought to comply as far as we can make the statutes integrate with four oh four. So you don't have to start after you get your ESA clearance all over again to try to get four oh four clearance. And we're spending an awful lot of time working on that, and we've made considerable progress in terms of moving forward on that. In fact, the whole of the project, that is, the HCP and the four oh four part of the HCP process is, are going to be evaluated within the environmental impact report, environmental impact statement process. So that we'll be evaluating both from a four oh four and an HCP process, the impacts of what we're proposing in the HCP. That'll also include a LEDPA analysis. LEDPA stands for the Least Environmentally Damaging Project Alternative, and it is an analysis that one does under section four oh four of the Clean Water Act. And so we're hoping to be able to regionally address these issues so that we'll have essentially a one-stop shopping for the critical elements of what we need to be done in terms of moving forward. If I could have the next slide? The, as I indicated, this is a vernal pool-driven plan because of the significance of that habitat within the South Sacramento area. And as a consequence, it underscores the need to coordinate with the fishery agencies, along with the Army Corps of Engineers and EPA and the Regional Board. Fish and Wildlife Service, Department of Fish and Game are the agencies that are really looking at the Endangered Species Act issues most critically. The Army Corps of Engineers, EPA, and the Regional Board are looking at the Clean Water Act issues most prominently. Next slide, please. Now, the idea generally here, and I'm going to try to avoid getting down too far in the weeds here, but you can ask me any questions about this that you would like. The idea is, on the four oh four, four oh one components of what we're trying to do is to get a programmatic general permit. That is, to get a general permit that will cover and allow activities to move forward, assuming that those activities fall within the criteria that will be established within a wetland ordinance. The idea is that each of the land use jurisdictions, the City of Galt, the other cities, the county, where they have land use jurisdiction, will adopt a wetland ordinance, which will contain all of the criteria that will be needed in order to get issued a general programmatic permit by the Corps of Engineers under the Clean Water Act. If we could get the next slide. And the idea there was, is that it will provide a much more streamlined, reliable Clean Water Act permitting process for projects that comply with the HCP. Because, again, the wetland ordinance and the HCP will be embedded one within the other and integrated. So that theoretically, if one complies with the HCP, one will also comply with the ordinance and be able to be, obtain a general permit under section four oh four of the Clean Water Act. It will include in lieu mitigation fee payment program. It should eliminate a lot of burdensome and redundant regulatory processes, and it should incorporate a lot of the processes that otherwise are required under CEQA and NEPA. Therefore, once we do it as part of the HCP, we ought not to have to keep doing it over and over and over again with each project that comes down the line. Next slide. The idea would be that the general programmatic permit would have three classes, and the classes would be based upon acreage that is to be filled by any given project. And at this point, we don't have the threshold acreages determined yet, but that each class would increase through thresholds, so that, let's say, for example, the first threshold would be a class that has fill of one to three acres. And the next one would be two to five, or three to six acres, and the next one would be six to ten acres, and so forth through the three classes, with a fourth class that would be handled through a letter of permission for projects that exceeded those thresholds but still would be determined to have minimal impacts. There, it's laid out there, and the differences between the classes is, the less acreage and less impact, you'll have minimum agency noticing. So you'll come, for example, into the City of Galt, and there'll be a checklist, and your project will comply with the HCP. You'll pay whatever fees are associated with that, and you will get your HCP clearance, and you will get your Clean Water Act clearance through the general permit. The difference in the classes is primarily the notice that needs to go out to the federal and state agencies. Under the first class, where you have smaller acreages, you'd have a much less stringent noticing requirement than, for example, in class three, where we're looking now at a thirty-day agency noticing requirement. I might add that thirty days is streamlined compared with what would be necessary if one were to move forward with an individual permit before the Corps of Engineers. Next slide, please. This is, the next slide deals with a fourth category. That's where the Corps will have to issue the permit because it exceeds the threshold acreages. And the idea there would be an expedited letter of permission process, which would be spelled out as part of the HCP, and spelled out as part of the wetland ordinance. And the next slide talks about this class, or class four. What we're looking at there is a permitting process through the expedited letter of permission that would take no more than three months in order to move forward and obtain a, what would end up being a permit under this expedited letter of permission. Next. The wetland ordinance that I referred to is still being developed. It's under consideration by a four oh four subcommittee made up of stakeholders, as well as state and federal representatives, as well as local agency representatives. They'll incorporate such things as best management practices and LIDS in order to move forward. And these are just simply the types of things that would allow a project to be permitted just simply by looking at management practices, as opposed to other kinds of mechanisms. Next slide. Goal of Wetland Preservation Ordinance is, and these all follow the federal mandate, I might add, is no net loss in quantity and biological diversity of wetlands and associated buffers, and incorporate wetland protection into the land use planning and management development approval procedures. These are requirements that come at us from the federal government in the context of section four oh four and four oh one of the Clean Water Act. What I have here is a way to. What I have here is a way to complicated slide that attempts to show how all this will be integrated. But on the far left in green is the wetland ordinance process I've been talking about. That will move forward, and it can only move forward, for example, in the City of Galt if the City of Galt would, in the end, approve that wetland ordinance for the city. Parallel to that is that middle column, and that middle column is the programmatic general permit. It will be developed in coordination with the wetland ordinance, so that they ought to parallel each other very significantly. The third column there, which is in blue, is the NEPA-SEQA compliance under the Habitat Conservation Planning effort, and it should incorporate and analyze both what's going on in the programmatic general permit process, as well as within the wetland ordinance process. And the last column there is the state process, and that's the programmatic water quality certification that one gets through the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The implementation of 404 should promote, again, regional watershed approach toward wetland preservation, should complement the goals of the South Sacramento HCP, and should protect the quality and quantity of waters within the planned area. What we've done so far in terms of progress is, we've had two congressional briefings, one on August 19th in Rancho Cordova, another on September 22nd in Washington, D.C. We had congressional representatives at both of those. We had the local agencies represented, plus the state and federal agencies represented in those meetings. One of the issues that you all mentioned to me last time was sphere of influence. We have included the current spheres of influence in the urban development area and all the plan's calculation of take. In addition to that, the HCP anticipates Elk Grove and Galt will be amending their spheres of influence. And the language that goes into the HCP talks about the fact that upon annexation of a sphere of influence, take from covered activities within the sphere of influence be authorized, take under the federal and state permits, and the sphere of influence will thereafter be deemed to be within the urban development area for the purposes of the South Sacramento HCP. Subsequently, all references to the urban development area in this agreement and the South Sacramento HCP will be deemed to include the spheres of influence. And all provisions of this agreement, the South Sacramento HCP and federal and state permits that apply to the UDA will apply to the spheres of influence. The idea here is that, once those spheres of influence are annexed, they're treated just like any other areas within the urban development, and take can take place, and those take activities will be covered by the permits issued in the HCP. There was an area of concern in Folsom, and I use that as an example because I think that there's an area down here that's of concern also. It is not within the existing sphere of influence, and what we've done there is what we've done here. And I want to remind you of this, and that is, an HCP is not a land use planning document. It's merely a document that authorizes take under the HCP, and if we're lucky, the way we do it, we'll get coverage under Clean Water Act Section 401 and 401, 404 and 401. It is not a land use document. It does not preclude any land use decisions that you all may want to make, either now or in the future. What we've done, however, is the development of language for inclusion in the HCP that ought to preserve and actually say just what I've just said. We can go to the next slide. And these types of, this type of language is being developed for use within the HCP just simply to underscore the fact that there's nothing in this HCP that is going to control land use planning, that all it does is provide Endangered Species Act and 404 coverage, and it allows you all to make decisions that you would like to make. It will mean, however, if an area currently is not covered within the South Sacramento HCP as a sphere of influence area that will be pulled into the HCP, it does mean that areas that are currently not within a sphere of influence and not covered under the HCP, they'll need to move forward on their own, either through amendment of the HCP or under individual permits, in order to get ESA and Section 404 coverage. Next slide. Again, the preliminary draft, this is the next steps, preliminary drafts in Sections, Chapter Seven through Ten of the HCP have been released for public input. As I indicated there before, the Biological Subcommittee and Steering Committee, we're going to get comments back, and we have comments back on other chapters. We'll continue to revise those as we move forward. We need to finish the implementation agreement and then prepare the draft, as opposed to the preliminary draft, of the HCP and to finalize the HCP map. Last slide, please. And then, we will need to release a draft of the wetland ordinance for public input. It's not been out for public input. We've got some state and federal agency input, which we're trying to move forward with. It should go out, it'll also go out to the 404, 401 Subcommittee made up of stakeholders within the public, the general public. And then, of course, we'll need to prepare the draft of EIS. Lot of work still, obviously, needs to be done. A lot of work has been done. There's a lot of substance in everything I've just articulated. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
I have a couple of questions and comments. You've given us a lot of information, and the diagram that you put up there was about as complicated as anything I've ever seen. So, what I really want you to tell us is, how does that boil down to affect the City of Galt? For example, you talked about the Freeport Regional Water Project. What does that have to do with us?
It doesn't. And I was trying to be careful to say that what it does is, it creates a hard point, a reason for getting this done sooner than later. I guess we could do this for another 12 years, but part of the problem is this, is that absent an HCP that deals with Endangered Species Act issues, absent a regional look at how we're going to deal with Section 404, 401, and wetted habitat issues, each jurisdiction, and here, whether it be the City of Galt, the City of Elk Grove, the City of Rancho Cordova, or the County of Sacramento and its unincorporated areas, or regional sanitation as it moves forward with infrastructure, or the County Water Agency in that regard, or if the connector becomes part of the HCP process, we'll have to deal with these things in what can only be a piecemeal manner. You can only take a look at your little piece of puzzle and make determinations. The benefit this creates for you is the fact that it allows you to have a broad look at the entire South Sacramento area, so that your land use planning decisions can be done in the context of that broader look at these critical issues. The option is always there, you know, and I hate to say this, but I mean, the option is always there to opt out and to kind of do it on your own and to move forward with your own project-specific compliance. Sooner or later, in one form or another, you're going to have to deal with Endangered Species Act issues as you move forward with approvals, and you're going to have to deal with Section 404 and 401. And the question is whether or not this is a better way of moving forward with that from your perspective than doing it on your own and looking at only, you know, a small piece of the puzzle.
Would you share with us how Galt has representation? There's many different agencies that's going to be making these decisions. How and who do we have from Galt that's looking out for our interest?
Well, you know, Galt is represented on the, in every one of the things I've talked about, just like every other jurisdiction. You have no greater, no lesser representation. So, therefore, the local agency working group, the city-county management team, all the subcommittees, all the stakeholder groups, Galt has participated, and we anticipate will continue to participate as part of that process. Asserting within that process interests that are unique to Galt to make certain that as we move forward with this, we're not sacrificing those issues. The other jurisdictions are doing the same as we move forward. It's part of what makes it, you know, more complicated than if there was just someone out there making unilateral decisions about how to do all this stuff.
Specifically, we're represented by, I believe, Kurt, someone from our city attorney's office, and I think Jason, you also attend some of the meetings, so we do have at least that much representation. And the last question I have is, it says you almost are mandated to be approved by the year 2011. Is that correct? Completely?
Well, you know, it is, it is, how can I say mandated? The mandate comes out of, and the reason I referred to the Freeport Regional Water Project is, in order to meet the goals of that project, we have to have an HCP or some other kind of ESA clearance somewhere around January 2011. You know, quite frankly, we're not going to get this done by January 2011, but we're going to get it done as close to that date as we can. But we're going to do it right, and we're going to get the documents prepared so that not only will they meet your mandates in terms of what you're expecting to see in those documents, and remember that, from Galt's perspective, you're the only ones that can approve those documents. And I want to underscore all of that, you know, that in order for Galt to ultimately participate, you will have to move forward and approve all of those documents. We're going to have to have much more focused kind of discussions about the documents as they get into, at least that draft form. Right now, as they're a preliminary draft, it's difficult to kind of focus down, but as they move down through that, get into a draft form, I assume that the staff of the city will want to have some workshops where we're actually able to drill down and answer a lot of specific questions. But underlying all of this, none of this stuff gets approved without your approval in terms of your participation. That means the Habitat Conservation Plan's got to meet your approval. The implementation agreements have got to meet your approval. The wetland ordinance would have to, you know, meet your approval, otherwise it doesn't become a wetland ordinance within the City of Galt. So, each and every one of those things have got to be approved by you, otherwise, you're not a final participant within the HCP, and we've failed at our mission to bring all the project partners along.
Is this information on the Internet?
Yes, it is. It's on the county website. All of these chapters, you're free to look at. I write down to where the edits are made, the redlined versions of all this stuff, so you can see exactly what's being done there.
Thank you.
Any other questions anybody might have?
We did have one member of the public that just wanted to look, Council, no, I overlooked him.
Back to the representation issue, we've mentioned that our city attorney, our community development director, and also, at times, our city manager has been in attendance. Would you say that's comparable to what other cities are sending to the meeting?
Yes.
So, based on-
And the county also.
Okay. So, the county's sending three or four staff members to each meeting, just like we are?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're getting better representation per capita based on the size of our city and all the different ones in the-
You're getting very good representation. I will say that, in terms of outside costs, the County Water Agency, this goes to part of the question, is picking up most of those outside costs at this point in time, including my costs and other experts, because a lot of this stuff is highly technical, plus a lot of the work is being internalized and done internal to the county in terms of accounting for time and cost. So, what happens is that we meet, we make decisions, and time is expended by you all, and then, all of the work that it takes to synthesize that, put that into its final or preliminary final or draft form, then is our costs that are borne by others at this point in time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
We did have one member of the public that wished to speak.
John Slaughterback, I live in the City of Galt. I don't really understand this tonight. I guess council knows more about why you're questioning this. I don't quite understand why we're bringing this back and questioning this. This sounds like something good for the City of Galt, and each council member of us there should be interested in what's best for the City of Galt and its citizens. So, I really question what this is for about. We spent, if I recall right, $20,000 to become a member of this, and everything I've heard sounds like we want to stay a member. So, I'm really confused on why you're questioning it. If this is not good for the City of Galt, then it's not good for these other cities. So, I'm confused on why we're questioning it, and if it's not good for us, it's not good for anybody. But if council could explain why they're concerned here, I might have a little better understanding. Like I said, this sounds like something we need, we should have, and it's what's best for the city and its citizens. And we spent, if I recall right, $20,000 to get here. We're not going to get a refund. So, if you could explain why you question this, I'd like to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think anyone, Mr. Slaughterback, is questioning the HCP. I mean, I've made it pretty clear from the beginning that I'm glad that the city's participating in the Habitat Conservation Plan. If you look at the overall development opportunities for the City of Galt in the future, this is the best way to facilitate development. And if we're not participating in this program, it's going to be a cumbersome process in the future.
That's the way I see it. Thank you.
Well, and let me also express my reason for being interested, is because we have, I think, most of us in the State of California realize that we have so many regulations that are affecting us, which are increasing the cost to the water treatment plant and the other things, that I think it's our duty as council members to monitor these things as they're coming down before they're out of our control. I think it's just a matter of being interested in what's going to happen to the future of our town and our citizens, not necessarily being critical, but just understanding and knowing what's going to happen.
Well, I appreciate that. I would like to see council on top of things, and if that's what you're questioning, fine. But just remember that if it's not good for us, then it's not good for the other cities either. I can't see why it would be bad for one city and then good for the others.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughterback.
Thanks, John. Public comment? If we have nothing else, that's what's, I'm sorry, before we go to that, I need to stop, back up a little bit. We need to make a decision whether we're going to move forward with the proposed resolution.
I have a question.
Everyone was looking at me. I realized I made a mistake. Sorry.
I do appreciate the presentation. I like that we get an update on that. If we already have staff participating in these meetings, why do we need to make a recommendation if we've already done it in the past? Why is it agendized? Who agendizes?
They are trying to provide a written record, I believe, and maybe Mr. Solmak can speak to this a little bit more. My understanding is that they want to have a confirmation from each one of the participating agencies that, yes, in fact, here's a resolution of support. This will probably go to state and federal representatives to demonstrate that our support is behind us.
Yeah. One of the things that, you know, we've been, as I've said, we've been back to Washington once, and we had a fairly large hearing back there on this HCP and the 404 process. We have had countless meetings with the state and federal agencies, and one of the things that they continually say is, are you communicating with the elected officials within the jurisdictions that are involved? And are they supportive of moving forward with this process because, from their perspective, we, state and federal agencies, are spending a lot of time, effort, and federal and state dollars in order to do their side of the table of these mechanisms? And so, the- And so the means that we've arrived at in terms of continuing, providing them with assurance, but not misleading them in any way, shape, or form in terms of where you're at in your decision-making process is, is this resolution, which ultimately just simply resolves that you will continue, that you're participating, that's, you can read this a lot better than I evidently, since I'm unable to read it, but that staff participating in local agency working group, the city-county management team, the two major teams that I've talked about, should proceed with the completion of the draft HCP and draft documents related to the Regional Programmatic Approach to Clean Water Act permitting. This gives them some level of comfort that the project partners are moving forward in a earnest way with the work that I've described to you today. And that's the extent of the resolution, but it is, the reason for doing it has a lot to do with the state and federal agencies that are working on the other side of the table. And I will tell you quite frankly, and I should have said this earlier, is that those agencies are, in my opinion, at least at this point in time, really working in good faith. They have expended a lot of time, effort, and, you know, federal dollars in terms of this process, both here in California as well as back in Washington, D.C., and we are making progress. And I have found every one of the meetings we have with them very, very interesting, and I just need to compliment them here in terms of the work that they've done in terms of moving forward with this process.
Thank you. Can I ask our city attorney a couple of questions real quick?
Sure.
Okay. We're not a full council up here tonight, we don't have all five council members. Should this vote go to a two to two? It would die.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody opposing it could bring it back to council, anybody voting for it could not?
Correct, since it would fail, the winning party, let's say, has the ability to bring it back.
I have some concerns. We invested $20,000, staff time, et cetera. I would like to see if there's some support up here for bringing this back when we have a full council to make a decision versus making any motions tonight. Can I do that?
Absolutely. The council does have the option to continue the item to the next meeting.
I'd like to ask, we continue this item to the next meeting so that we have five council members up here voting for or against it? Is that okay?
It's okay. I think my concern would be council member Claire was not here tonight. He wasn't here for the presentation. He can obviously watch the tape, but I want to just throw the motion out there and see if it passes, if that's okay with you.
Well, my concern is simply this, that if I, although I support the HCP, my concern is that if it fails, I won't have the ability, nor would you, or the mayor, or Barbara, whomever, to bring it back. It can only be brought back by the people who actually voted against it. And if they're voting against it, they're not likely to bring it back. So those are my concerns.
Are you wanting to bring it back? Is that where you're-
I'm asking to continue it to the next meeting. I would like all five council members to be here when we vote on it, that's all. I think I'd feel more comfortable with that.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
To?
To move forward.
To move forward, or to continue it to the next meeting?
We have two motions, I think, going here.
You had one.
Well.
That Don had one, and Andrew. This was the first motion.
The first motion on the floor was to continue the item.
Now, we need a second.
Correct.
If we don't get a second, then it dies.
Correct.
Okay. Going once, twice, three times. Okay, that motion's died then.
With that, I would like to move staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion or comment? Done? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Now, we'll go to public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Mary Lou Powers?
My name is Mary Lou Powers. I live in the city of Galt, and I'm here tonight as the Director of South County Services. And I was getting ready for my yearly speech in December, and I'm hoping that all of you had a very nice Thanksgiving and that we all have a lot to be thankful for. So I wanted to tell you what South County Services is thankful for. I'm very thankful that we're still standing. We've had a lot of cuts and a lot of budget cuts and a lot of employee cuts, and we're still here. And I'm very thankful for the 7,770 families and individuals that we were able to help last year with food, clothing, rental assistance, utility assistance, senior medical transportation, and other services. I'm very, very thankful that I have the confidence from all five of you on the city council. It doesn't happen very often, and I'm very proud to be one of the few people that have all of you in my corner. I'm very, very thankful to Jason and the rest of the staff at the city of Galt for all the help they've got and for all the pushing forth that they've done this year and I know they're going to do next year. I'm really thankful for the Boys and Girls Scouts and the Cub Scouts for kicking off our season in December with their canned food drive. They went out on one of the coldest days of the year this year and got about 40 or 50 cases of canned foods that we will be able to distribute this time at Christmas, and so we're very thankful for that. I'm also thankful for Galt High School and Galt Liberty High who kicked off a toy drive for us at one of their dances and got over 200 toys this year. So we're looking pretty good already, which I'm very thankful for. I want to thank everybody that goes to Rayleigh's and puts a penny, or two, or a dollar, or five, or 20, or 100 into the little boxes up there for the Foods for Families, because all of that money comes back to our food bank here in the city of Galt. It doesn't leave the area, and it helps us to maintain our food drive and our food pantry all through the year. I'm also thankful for everyone that supported us all through the years. We have a lot of organizations out there that always pull through this time of the year. Some of you are out in the audience already, and I want you to know that I really thank that you continue to help those less fortunate in our town. I want to thank Golden Living Convalescent Hospital for their check every year to help us with the senior dinner that we have. This year, it's going to be a luncheon, and we hope to serve over 200 seniors a Christmas dinner, and a lot of these seniors are seniors that are shut in and don't have anyone else here and won't be going anyplace for the holidays, so I'm very grateful for that. I want to thank the police and fire department and all the schools. I've got a flyer here from them. I'd like to pass it out to you guys and put it up on some bulletin board somewhere, please. They have taken over for us the toy parts of our Christmas basket giveaway, and it's been a great relief. We need over 1,000 toys this year for some needy children in our community, and you need to know that that toy might be the only toy that some of them get this year. I also want to thank, and I promise you it's not that long, I want to thank everyone that does support us and to let you know that we've already had our signups. We do have a waiting list, and because of the generosity of everyone in this town, we have never been able to turn anyone away this time of the year. We are going out to Walnut Grove now, so we will be giving 550 seniors and singles and over 100 families out in the Walnut Grove area Christmas baskets, along with the 300 senior and singles and 250 family baskets will be given out this year. I wanted to also give you our event dates, so if you might come by and say hello. Our senior dinner will be December 11th. There's still time for anyone 60 or older to sign up. You've got till tomorrow, but we'll take it till the rest of the week. It'll be at the Chabola Center. It'll be December 11th from 10 to 12. And then on December 18th, we'll be giving away our seniors and singles dinners, and then we'll be giving our baskets away on December 19th. So I just wanted to thank you all for your continued support of our organization, and I just wanted to say that we are now doing twice as much work with half the employees, so I do really feel that I have to give a shout out to my three employees, Jennifer Colloy, Gloria Robricus, and Peggy Forse of Andrews. So if you have any toys and you'd like to bring them down to the police station or the fire stations or down to our offices, and of course, we'll always take cold, hard cash.
Thanks, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mary Lou, thank you and your staff for all your hard work and effort. I know it's been very hard, and yours are getting lean, but you guys have really stuck it out, and I'm really grateful for you guys being there for those people that need it, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback, I live in Galt. I didn't know it till tonight, but Greg, the public works director, already plans to bring this back to council, what I'm going to talk about here a little bit. But I still would like to talk about it because that's what I'd planned to do. I'm maybe going to tone it down a little bit, but water meters. A year ago, public works director addressed council and said that now is the time to implement a program of installation of the second phase water meters. Nothing was decided at that meeting. If meters were in use throughout the city, the residents would automatically conserve on their water usage, which in turn would reduce the near-term needs to expand the wastewater treatment plant, and with a subsidized pilot retrofit program, would further delay the need to expand the wastewater treatment plant. This is a known fact, other cities have done this and avoided a wastewater treatment plant expansion. Conservation of water will also reduce the chemical costs to create the city's drinking water and save on electric power consumption and save on maintenance of electric pumps, a win-win situation. Some government officials knew this and mandated water meters be installed. The city has already spent a considerable amount of money to study and implement a program to install water meters. If this council doesn't implement a second phase water installation program, a new council will have the expense of a new study, and it will be paid for by the utility rate players in the city of Galt. Some of this I scribbled out because I decided not to use it after I heard we were, that Greg was going to address it. When water meters are in full use throughout the city, it also will help stabilize sewer and water rates for the citizens of Galt. When a city of government is well-managed and efficient, it stimulates growth for the city of Galt, and that means favorable living condition for all of its residents. It creates a desirable community in which to live and raise families. It also creates favorable conditions for new development, thus a benefit to developers. I do have, I have time, I wanted to hit on another subject just a minute. This item was approved by council before the Oversight Committee was formed. The city paid $120,000 for a filter pilot test to determine which filter would best be suited for the city's wastewater needs. After the filter pilot test, the city then conducted interviews with three engineering firms for the contract to do the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. From those meetings came the consensus to use the filter that had a proven track record throughout the industry, which was the same filter the city spent $120,000 for a filter pilot test to determine. Darrell Claire was the only leader on council with a foresight to question that $120,000. If just one other leader on council would have joined him in that debate, then maybe council would have concluded it would make more sense to first put the engineering contract out for a bit and hold the decision to do a filter pilot test in abeyance until the engineers' presentation and comments and whether they thought other tests would be necessary. The filter pilot test, I believe, was probably a Wes Joes idea, and Wes Joes got the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughterback.
Terry Peterson. And Cliff and Lofton after Mr. Peterson.
Thank you very much. My name's Terry Peterson. I'm a 17-year resident of Galt. We live outside of Galt. I do have a Galt business license. My company, Digital Solutions, has been researching grants over the years for high-tech installations. Earlier this year, a couple of partners and I started a new company called Cal Valley Solar. Naturally, I started looking for grants in the solar industry and found that the federal government has given California $38 million for energy efficiency programs. That trickles down to Galt getting $133,736 for either some sort of energy conservation or some sort of energy generation program. I would like to pursue those funds with Galt, get some help from the city to go ahead and apply for those funding in the part of the grant. Time is critical for this. We need to have a letter of intent to submit an application signed as soon as possible, and the applications are due by January 12th of 2010, and installation is to be completed by 2012. So at this point, I would be requesting that the city council possibly assign somebody within the city of Galt that's interested in pursuing this, so I'll leave it open to you. Does it sound interesting? I mean, if I walked in and said I got $133,000 for a solar system or a grant for you, would it be something you'd be interested in pursuing?
Maybe Kurt can address this a little bit, Mr. Peterson, but I think we're already working on getting some of the funding that you're talking about.
That's correct. On the agenda item later on your agenda, you are considering two grant applications, and it sounds like, although I'm not certain which grant Mr. Peterson is speaking about, we are making application for a $133,736 California Energy Commission block grant for purposes of changing out the streetlights to go to a more efficient, high-quality streetlight lamp, and our co-applicants with smud, I believe, on that application. So we have, and I believe the city manager has been coordinating that effort.
Mr. Peterson, congratulations on starting a business in the solar industry. It's definitely an emerging technology again, even though it's been around for a long time. If you've been watching the newspapers, you've been able to tell that the city of Galt is going to be a pilot city for the California First program, and if you're doing residential solar installations, that would definitely be something that you could participate in in the city.
Right. Well, that's why I thought that Galt would be so interested in doing this, is their direction that they've been going with solar has been applaudable, and we've just, you know, have been very excited about your involvement in that, so, go green for Galt, I guess, and I hope that you guys have a, if you're already going with this other project, I'm glad that they're at least pursuing the money.
There is also the other grant application on the same agenda report. We're looking at $4 million for retrofit to commercial, industrial, as well as residential, where in that case, private contractors would be involved to, for insulation purposes, but I don't want to kind of jumping around on the agenda here tonight.
I'd like to suggest that you, if you have not, is to get ahold of Jason. He had to step out, but if you have his card, maybe you can get his card and you can, you know, give him a call or through Kurt, and maybe as a suggestion, you guys could set up a meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I think we tried to get in to see Jason earlier this last week, but it was Thanksgiving, so it was hard to find some time. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Lofton?
Good evening, Cliff Lofton, I'm 62-year resident of Galt. I've been around here a while. I usually only get up here and say anything when my tax dollars are being spent, and I mean by me, I mean the citizens of Galt. I've been against this from the beginning. I know maybe it's not very popular, but I was glad to see it pulled for the agenda item with another 10- was another ten thousand dollars for this parking lot. We're spending almost a half a million dollars to start with, for a lot of money for a few. And now they're wanting another ten thousand dollars. I don't know if somebody misquoted the bid or what they did. But, and I don't know if this is an open-end contract. They're going to ask for ten thousand now, ten thousand later, ten thousand down the road. That's just my concern. The second was, this is short, the roundabouts that the city's talking about building out here. Every time I go to Woodbridge after I heard about this, I drive through the one there, which is real small. It's got yield signs all the way around, which are bent over, knocked down, black tire marks where they try, people try to turn around there. It's very confusing, and that's only with sometimes one or two or three cars there. I don't know why Galt wants to be a test pilot for something like this. I really think it's a bad idea. First off, you couldn't wait for two weeks, from one city council meeting to the next, to make sure that Caltrans is going to give you a million-dollar grant. Now, Caltrans, this was on my understanding that they were going to use the ADA money to give you a million bucks. Now, if they're going to give it to you, are they going to give it to you free and clear? Or are they still going to want you to comply to ADA? Maybe that million dollars, by the time they put their stipulations against it of eight hundred thousand dollars, you're only going to wind up with two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's just my question. And the third thing was, at the last meeting, when, and I can't remember the fellow's last name, Homer from one of the parks, I think he owns a couple of mobile home parks out here, said that they were only charging three hundred and five, or maybe it was three hundred and fifty. I don't want to, pardon? Okay, three hundred and five. I had several people that live out there brought and showed me their bill. They're paying four hundred and ten dollars, and it's going up to first to four hundred and twenty. I mean, that's just, I mean, I like to get it for the record, straight. And that's what it is. I mean, we can spend money here and there. We can't spend thirty thousand bucks when we seem to be throwing money away with Mr. Slaughterback was talking about the hundred and twenty thousand we allowed for a test plan for something that he probably knew they were going to use to start with. But I'd just like to see our tax money thought of a little better and spent a little wider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have other speakers on other issues. Does anyone else want to speak under public comment? Want to wait for your item?
We'll move to information consent calendar. I believe we still had, what, two items? One is being moved and one was being pulled. Is that correct?
I think we have three items.
Okay.
Do you want me to read everything?
Would you read them, all nine of them?
We have nine items on the consent calendar. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November ninth and the special and regular meetings of November seventeenth. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, approval of the treasures report for the period ending October two thousand and nine. Number four, which was called for discussion, the resolution suspending existing residential photovoltaic solar system permit fees. Number five, real property acquisition, Central Galt interchange. Number six, which will be moved to the consent calendar on the redevelopment agency, is the annual activity report for fiscal year two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine for the redevelopment agency of the City of Galt. Number seven, eight hundred megahertz radio upgrade project addendum. Number eight, Galt market rental fee adjustments. And number nine, which is being moved to the redevelopment agency regular calendar under Public Works' request for additional funds for the construction of the Lincoln Way parking lot project.
Okay. So we'll poll number four. Councilman, Mayor, if you could.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I polled this item tonight regarding the resolution suspending existing residential photovoltaic solar system permit fees. Just to stress the importance of following through with staff's recommendation tonight in correlation with the solar program that we're looking at participating in the summer of next year. It's going to make it a lot easier through what we're adopting tonight to make the project pencil out for homeowners in the city. So again, I want to thank staff for bringing this forward, and I would like to move staff's recommendations.
No, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Now, the remainder of the other items that were not moved. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If none, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Next item?
Next item, scheduled matters, public hearing to consider adoption of resolution of necessity determining determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain property and property interests in and to a portion of the Beekman property located north of Bosso Road, east of State Route ninety-nine for the Central Galt interchange and State Route ninety-nine improvement project.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The next three items are all regarding acquisition of property for the Central Galt interchange project. I will make a general presentation regarding the purpose and need for the overall project, rather than do this separately for each parcel. We will be talking specifically about findings for each property and why they specifically are needed for the actual project. I do want to point out that we provided copies of the last two pages, or last page of two agenda reports, Beekman and AM Enterprises. Unfortunately, in the scanning process, they stuck to the previous report, and they were not distributed, so those were distributed to council earlier this evening. The first item before you is, we'll be talking about the Beekman property, but before I get to that, I'll run through the overall purpose and needs of the project. This is very similar to what council saw a couple of months ago. We're going to be discussing numerous points, talking about the need and description of the project, the scoping and the selection, how we got down to alternative thirteen A as a final alternative, overall project approvals, the environmental review, individual properties, and how we are needing specific interest in those properties, the actual acquisitions, the offers to purchase that have been made, alternatives to the hearing of necessity, and going to the actual findings for each property. These are spelled out in great detail in the agenda reports. I'm going to be kind of going over the fine points of each one. This map shows the overall location of the Central Galt interchange here. The yellow boundary shows the current city limits of Galt, and you can see the proximity to Galt and the interchange. And the white boundary is the new general plan boundary. So you can see that the interchange itself is the primary interregional transportation corridor through Galt, linking Galt with Sacramento County to the north and Bakersfield, Los Angeles to the south. This slide shows the importance of the interchange project, too. The ultimate traffic circulation plan is part of the general plan. This is interchange. This is Bosso Road and C Street going into the downtown area. It's showing the link into A Street, which is designated as the primary east-west corridor. Will have the future grade separation of the UP rail tracks. And it shows the link over into Carillion and Marango Row as far as important to get people up into the northeast area of the city. It will provide connections both along the corridor and within the community, ways to get across the freeways. And going through the project itself, there have been a number of options that were developed. We started out with, I think it was fifteen different alternatives. Through a scoping process, this was brought down to six, and then two, and finally into the final alternative. These were analyzed, the two final, thirteen, A and seven, along with the no-bid alternative. These are analyzed in full detail throughout the environmental process. The city prepared environmental documents for the project in compliance with the National Environmental Protection Act and CECLIP. And in May of two thousand and seven, the council voted to certify the final environmental documents and selected alternative thirteen A. The selection of thirteen A, which is what you see before you now, basically set the right-of-re requirements for the implementation of the project. The city council ultimately gave the city manager the authority to administer the acquisition of real property for the project. In January sixth, two thousand and nine, the city council adopted a resolution of necessity seeking authorization from Caltrans to conduct resolution of necessity hearings for the project. The Sacramento County Board of Supervisors also adopted a resolution of necessity and consent for the city to acquire rights of way for the project in the unincorporated areas. This is related to the Beekman property before you tonight. In terms of where we're at now, overall project-wise, the plans and specifications are complete. They're at Caltrans now for the final approval. We had a bid opening today, received very good bids for what we call an early tree removal. We'll be doing that hopefully through the next council meeting, the first one in January. We want to have all the trees removed prior to the March deadline for the Swenson Hawk. Utility work will also be starting. Our plan is to have the right-of-way acquisition certified by March two thousand and ten. This means we have to have control of all the right-of-way needed for the project that will allow Caltrans to issue it ready to list. That means we can go to bid. And maybe we'll do that. We want to award bids at the council meeting of July two thousand and ten and be complete two years later. Now I'm going to move into the subject properties. In terms of the actual properties before you tonight, we need to require these properties now through eminent domain process in order to move forward with the completion schedule. The resolutions that we're going to present to all the council to make the required findings to authorize the subject property and interest for eminent domain acquisition. The resolution must be approved by a two-thirds vote. And the council may choose not to adopt the resolution of necessity and direct staff to go back and continue negotiations with the property owners. This action, though, would likely delay the project. We can continue negotiations with the property concurrent and parallel to the hearing of necessity and proceeding with eminent domain. The first property before you is, it was called the Beekman property, owned by Tyrone and Monica Beekman. It's approximately a three-point-eight-eight acre residential property. It's currently improved with the residence, the garage, and other utility buildings. Neither the residence or other buildings remain affected by the project. This shows the location of the property relative to the overlay of the future interchange project. This is ninety-nine here. This is the C Street Bosso Road over crossing. This is the new couplet to A Street. This is the Beekman property down in this corner. As you can see where the property is relative to where we're at with the rest of the project. This slide has been turned a little bit. This is Bosso Road down here, north being that way. Again, this is the Beekman property. This is the couplet extension. What's shown in the pinkish-purple here is the full take, the street right-of-way. And we have drainage and public utility easements that have been required, acquired for the property as well. The Beekmans have been given notice of the hearing. They're here tonight. The acquisitions that we're talking about tonight is a partial take fee acquisition of four thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine square meters. The public utility easement acquisition is seven hundred and sixty-one square meters. That's the orange. And the drainage easement acquisition is nine hundred and eighty-nine square meters. We substantially reduced the drainage easement acquisition through a storm drain installation versus an open channel. The city made an offer to purchase the property on September eighth, two thousand and nine. The property owner has since made a counteroffer. We've endeavored to purchase the property through negotiations, although so far we've been unsuccessful. Again, the negotiation can continue even if we want to proceed with the resolution of necessity tonight. Compensation is a separate issue from passing of the resolution tonight. In order to adopt the resolution of necessity, we need to go through and make six separate necessary findings. The first of these is that the public interest and necessity require the project. In going through the public scoping and all the environmental evaluations and all the alternative evaluations, the project is necessary. The no-bid alternative did not provide for any of the project needs. That's including increase in interchange capacity. It does not solve the current operational and safety deficiencies. Does not provide for pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Does not accommodate planned growth and several other benefits as described in your agenda package. In order to do that, then we must have some project in order to move forward. The second finding is that the proposed project is planned or located in a manner that will be the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. In moving forward with the project and all the different alternatives, there were several constraints that became evident very early on. And when ninety-nine was developed years ago and interchange was located here, the majority of the development in Galt was in the southwest quadrant, west of the freeway. Now, most of the vacant land is on the east side. So the early alternatives looked at developments that took a substantial chunk out of the current existing developments on the west side, decimated the shopping center. And so it became clear very early on that the social-economic impacts dictated that majority of the interchange be moved to the east side where there was more vacant land. So there was less impacts to people and to properties. The selected alternative thirteen A also has significant less impacts on wetlands and vernal pools. Alternative thirteen A displaces eleven persons instead of thirteen in alternative seven, although there is the same number of full parcel takes. We did several things relative to the project to minimize the take on this particular property. We did, as I mentioned, reduce the storm drain easement take by putting in underground storm drain system that reduced the width versus an open channel. The layout specifically of the streets are necessarily based on the geometrics and the constraints of Caltrans. Because of the elevations and new requirements for curves, the high point of the freeway bridges is not the center of the freeway, as you would think. The bridges are consistently going up and over the freeway, and then they start coming down well on the east side of the freeway. This was to avoid having to have huge fills on the west side by the shopping center and by the high school. So that offset the vertical site distance, the stopping distance of coming down on the other side of the road. That too much dictated the heights of Bosso Road on the east side. There's also clearance requirements, intersection spacing requirements that dictate where the realignment of Cristal Road was located. We are relocating that intersection. And so that too much dictates where the road goes and then the different necessitates the take from the Beekman property. The third finding is that the property interests described in the resolution of necessity are necessary for the project. Again, we cannot go forward with the project without the acquisition of this property based on its location relative to the project. There is no alternative land that we can build the project on. Since we've selected this alternative, that does not have a greater impact to the collective body in the area. The next finding is that the offer required by Government Code Section has been made to the owner of record. That offer was made to the Beekmans on September eighth, two thousand and nine. We've attempted to negotiate with them since then, although we've been unsuccessful. The fifth and sixth findings are kind of related. Basically, what this is, is that the subject property interests are being acquired for a compatible use, such that the city's use of the subject property will not interfere with or impair the continued use of the subject property for the public use that exists or may reasonably be expected to exist in the future. This is again based on California code of civil procedures. Basically means that we can coexist with other public uses within the property. Finding six is related, and it basically says the use to which the subject property is sought to be taken is more necessary public use than the use to which the property is currently appropriated. Again, public, subject to public procedures code. This basically says that the use that we're taking the property for through eminent domain is as important or more important than any other public use. This may be such as utility company or drainage easement, somebody else may come in and try to require through eminent domain. That concludes the findings that we have to present to you tonight. We're requesting the council open and conduct a public hearing and your testimony. And then if the findings have been made sufficiently, let the adopt the resolution of necessity.
Open the public hearing?
Okay, Ty Beekman, or Monica?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Monica Beekman, and I reside at the property. It's the only property involved in this overpass project, which is a partial take residence, and it's one of the two of the only properties that are outside the city of Galt. We, the Beekmans, have been involved in this process from the beginning. We've attended almost every public meeting, planning sessions, city council meeting for the past six and a half years dating back to spring of 2003. We've played fair, we've played nice, we've spoken our minds, but we've always done so with respect and the understanding for the need for this project. Today, I'm addressing the city council stating our belief that it is premature for the resolution of necessity to be adopted regarding our parcel. According to the California Code of Civil Procedures, Section 1240 dot 030, to be able to move forward toward eminent domain, you must establish all four of the required conditions prior to this motion. We believe that the offer in Greg's finding number four is what I'm talking to, required by Section 7267.2 of the Government Code, which is the city's offer to us, has not actually been made as it is neither clear nor complete as required by law. Here, I also want to bring to your attention that listed in your summary of issues, Exhibit 9 dash EX dash 2 that you received, while it is correct to state that we do not have objections to the project need and the project location, we, as incorrectly stated in your document, actually do have issues with the planning and to the city's offer of compensation pursuant to Government Code 7262.2. Bill Silver, the city of Galt's representative and the right-of-way consultant with Bender Rosenthal, stated in a previous email to us that the city does intend for negotiations to continue, and I've asked about several items that you discussed with me and what needs to be done. As yet, I have no direction to obtain quotes for anything. If you wish to comment on the design of the project as it relates to your property, the hearing to adopt a resolution is the opportunity to do so. There is no discussion of compensation at this hearing. If you wish to appear, please provide notice according to this city's letter, to which we did and are now doing so. We are not arguing value here. We are arguing the fact that this project does not have the details written into it to make us whole again. We have been asking for clarification on a number of issues since being presented the agreement for purchase document in September. And only yesterday, through an email and today via postal mail, did we receive an updated offer to purchase with some of those items addressed. We think that the city council also needs to be aware of the fact that your representative, Bill Silver with Bender Rosenthal, has not been completely clear with the city nor with us as represented by the following. Our belief that the city's offer to purchase has been and remains incomplete, a fact that we have continually stated to Bill Silver. Our argument is this. One, in the original offer, it is stated that the project includes the removal of existing driveway on Bosso Road and new Bosso Road driveway. When asked for clarification on the details of the driveway, we were told in writing, in contradiction to this original offer, quote, "We are providing a second driveway access off of Bosso Road only. Any additional driveway paving for RV access, et cetera, is not included in the CCW." It was only yesterday that a new offer presented to us finally detailed that 40 feet of driveway would be poured for our 38-foot motorhome in the backfield of our remaining property. We want you city council members to be aware of that the motorhome has been recognized as not being able to clear the new rise in elevation for our new Crystal Way driveway. Therefore, while we will be able to store our home in the backfield, we will be left with a landlocked motorhome unable to leave our property if we wish for it to utilize the current 30 amp station and septic setup it currently has at the side of our house. We have asked for this to be resolved, and it still has not. Point two, the first offer stated, quote, "The offer includes the following: relocation of the remote-controlled gate and power with existing gate returned to the owner," end quote. We asked for clarification, and we were later told, in contradiction to that original offer, that, quote, "The existing gate is slated to be removed by the contractor and salvaged to the owner. The owner will need to reinstall, including running new power for this gate." It was only yesterday that we received the offer stating that the city would consider going back to their first offer by way of curative damages. Point three, we brought up on September 8 that the map presented to us showed us as being left with a 300-square-foot bare hole in our driveway from the new driveway to the current garage. Bill told us that this is how the project is designed, and if we wish it to be different, that we should submit a quote to the city. He also stated that he had brought it up to the city. However, after speaking directly to Ron Boyle from Omni Means ourselves, Ron stated this was never brought to his attention. It was clearly an oversight on Omni Means' part, and that the correction has now been made. I want to bring it to all your attention that it took us going outside of Bill to get this resolved, a full two months later of having this concerned voice. If only we could do so on all these matters. Point four, the September 8 proposal stated, quote, "The property owners will have reduced privacy due to the proposed interchange project, particularly the extension of Crystal Way that will be constructed along the westerly boundary of that property," end quote. We discussed with Bill what would be done to fix this issue. He stated that the plan calls for the removal of all the trees that surround our property along Bosso, the removal of all the shrubs that surround our property along Bosso, and since within this area we have a double fence of barbed wire, then we would be paid curative damages for the replacement of this barbed wire fence. An interesting point to note is that the original city offer made stated for a replacement of 825 feet of fence, and yesterday's new and improved offer is for 690 feet of fence, a loss of 135 feet of fencing. We feel this issue is still not addressed, as it does not address the issues of privacy, safety, nor aesthetics. Point five, the city's offer to purchase states that, quote, "Compensation for landscaping will be included for the fee and easement area," end quote. However, this is not addressed in the agreement for purchase. When specifically asked for clarification regarding the issues of our 28 mature trees, their removal and compensation for their replacement, we were told they had no value, would not be replaced, and landscaping would be, and I quote, weeds. We believe this is also in a contradiction to this information. Simply put, these are just a number of the issues I bring before you today to address the issues of this project and its details and plans to make us whole again. We are merely asking the city for a clear and complete offer that addresses all aspects of this property and this project. We believe that we are fairly asking to have you address the parts of what you are taking away from us and not replacing. What we end up with now is a landlocked motorhome, no privacy which we currently have, no landscaping which we currently have, and a number of other issues that have been addressed with Bill Silver that have still not been rectified, addressed, or commented on. Secondly, on a second note, a document we received from Bender Rosenthal about the process of eminent domain states, quote, "If you do not reach an agreement with the agency because of some important point connected with the acquisition offer, the agency may suggest mediation as a means of coming to agreement," which I want to point out that they have not, however, we are not opposed to discussing. This document also states that if the agency thinks that a settlement cannot be reached, it will initiate condemnation proceedings. However, the agency may not take any action to force you into accepting this offer, and prohibited actions include, and here's the one we think applicable here, the advancing of the condemnation process. To begin with, we feel this way because only yesterday we were emailed and today received via U.S. Postal Mail, an updated offer to purchase with a few, but not all, of our issues addressed for the very first time. We believe that by receiving this the day of, or before this meeting, is advancing this process along rather forcefully. Secondly, we feel this way because of what has transpired with the issues of our trees. At our Level 1 meeting on November 5, Paul Kavanaugh and the Public Works Director for this project stated that the city needs to remove the trees on our property prior to March 1 because of the Swenson Hawk issue, and requested that we sign an early access for tree removal to the city so they can remove these trees in the month of January. We stated that we would not sign such an agreement as we had not resolved the issue regarding the value of our trees. We stated that Bill had told us that our trees had no value, and that at that time, both Paul Kavanaugh and Ron Boyle showed surprise at this information and asked for clarification. Following this, Paul Kavanaugh in an email to us stated, quote, "Separate from your right-of-way negotiations with the city of Galt, I am authorized to offer to purchase the 22 trees the city of Galt will be removing from your property for the Central Galt Interchange. This proposal will be processed and paid to you through the Department of Public Works, not the bigger interchange project. If you quote a reasonable price and sign a right-of-way entry to cut the trees, I can process a check at the next available council meeting. This is a standalone offer, not related to your December 1 council appearance." My husband and I each spent the next full days contacting experts, legal counsel, and obtaining data necessary to submit this offer. We understood that with the Thanksgiving holiday and the next council meeting, except for today, December 1, there was a rush for this information, so we scrambled to speed this along. It was hand-delivered to the Public Works Office for Paul that week. However, Paul then replied in an email stating, quote, "Thank you for your detailed tree valuation submittal received by your office on November 18, 2009. Unfortunately, I erred because I do not have authority to personally make the offer to purchase trees." We are unsure that all city members involved in this project are really aware of all the issues regarding the uniqueness of our property. We understand that we are an anomaly, as we are a resident in partial take, and that different aspects need to be addressed than those residences that are full takes, or the bare landowners that do not reside on our property. However, we believe it is in situations like the two I just mentioned where the city is, quote, "Advancing the condemnation process unfairly, as the city's representatives do not seem to be able to address our issues nor communicate confidently with the city." In conclusion, in response to receiving yesterday's still incomplete offer, we have submitted our proposal, which was our first time we've actually said anything to you guys yesterday, end quotes, to the city, which include landscaping, privacy sensing, and the paving of the Bosso driveway. And Councilman Member Andrew Meredith, you'll be pleased to know that all quotes were from local area businesses. We respectfully ask you, the city council, to hold off on this resolution of necessity until all aspects of the design of this project have been worked out and a new, more clearly stated and concise agreement for purchase can be presented to us. We believe that the offer required by Section 7262.2 of the Government Code has not been completed in full. We have a number of contradicting documents with not a lot of clearly spelled-out details nor questions answered. We also believe that as stated in the documentation we received from Bender Rosenthal that it clearly states that prohibited actions include the advancing of the condemnation process. We respectfully thank you for your time and attention to this matter and urge you to postpone adopting the resolution of necessity regarding our parcel.
Much shorter, but at the risk of being redundant. Ty Beekman, just outside the city of Galt. It's our simple contention that the city of Galt is unfairly advancing the condemnation process in relation to our parcel. Section 7267.2 of the Government Code states that you may not begin the condemnation process unless certain stipulations have been met. Among these are that you have made a clear and complete offer to purchase. We received our first offer to purchase in a face-to-face meeting with Bill Silver, the Bender Rosenthal right-of-way consultant, on September 8, as Monica stated. Upon reviewing the offer with him, we stated and have continued to state over the past two and a half months that the offer is not complete. We have documentation of numerous issues, including but not limited to landscapes, pavement, privacy, access, and aesthetics, many of which remain unaddressed to this day. In fact, just yesterday by email, today by U.S. Postal Service mail, we received the first offer which addresses any of the concerns raised by us on September 8. Although it still does not address all aspects of incompleteness, by allowing us only a half a day to consider and respond to such an offer, we believe the city is attempting to unfairly force us to accept their offer by advancing this condemnation process, which is specifically prohibited by law. We'd like to reassure the city that we do not object to the necessity of the project. We understand better than many the need for this public improvement. We see the traffic every single day that occurs on Bosso Road and C Street Overpass. We would further like to state that Ron Boyle of Omni Means has been completely prompt, courteous, and thorough and professional in all of his dealings with us. In closing, we'd like to reassure the city that we do remain committed to reaching a fair negotiated settlement. We're simply asking to be given a chance to consider a complete offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's for the public hearing at this point. Do you want to, okay, go ahead and close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Okay.
Mayor and council members, I'm Claudia Gorm. I'm with the city attorney's office. I'm your special condemnation counsel. To respond briefly, before you have any questions, both Mr. and Mrs. Beekman raised several concerns, of which both staff and myself would have to address. However, I will categorize their concerns as damages and compensation. They don't go to what's before you today, which is the resolution of necessity and the findings you need to make. Rather, they fall under whether the offer was what they want it to be or not, whether they feel they're being compensated for the acquisition that the city is, that the staff is proposing the city make. So, there haven't been any right-to-take challenges which would affect your findings. If there is a question as to whether the offer has been made, one offer has been made. It was September 8. After that, during the Level 1 and 2 hearings that Caltrans requires and with staff, including Paul Kavanaugh and through the city's consultants, Bender Rosenthal, there have been negotiations regarding that offer and negotiations regarding the amount of compensation and what that compensation will include, to the point that it includes accommodations and other structural and contractual and construction items. However, that's compensation, that's damages, that's not what's before you today. We haven't given you a staff report regarding compensation or damages, nor the amount, so you cannot consider that. However, they are concerns, which if the council were to approve the resolution of necessity today, they would be addressed by me, and I would contact the Beekmans and I would start dealing with them regarding that, even if we move forward and you adopt the resolution today, and even if we move forward and file a complaint in eminent domain. I believe Mr. Halliday can respond more on the timing of why this resolution is before you today, but believe me that it is because if we want to get possession and meet all the deadlines that Caltrans has required, we need to start acquiring the properties that have not been completed through an informal process or through a formal purchase and sale agreement, and that's why we're here today. Just a little bit more about what an offer is. Under Government Code 7267.2, it is an offer for the real property and what that includes. And in this case, that includes a fee take, a slope and drainage easement, a public utility easement, and the improvements within those. That offer was based upon an appraisal, and I believe Mrs. Beekman quoted a lot from the appraisal and not necessarily from the offer letter. The appraisal gives the offer amount of the compensation that the city offered, and through that and through negotiations, other issues have arisen. They have stated other damages they believe that they should be compensated for. However, again, the amount of the compensation, what's included in that compensation, the damages they believe that will be incurred on their specific property are not before you today. Rather, it is the fact that the offer was made, it was based upon an appraisal, and it was complete for the acquisitions that are being presented to you today. Anything?
Questions from council?
No questions.
Questions?
Yeah, I do. I'm still not clear as to the offer. What I hear the Beekmans saying is they didn't feel like they received a complete offer. And to them, a complete offer included addressing some things like tree, fence, landscaping. But I'm hearing you say that those are...
The offer was based on an appraisal. They're claiming additional damages, additional... They're claiming additional damages, additional compensation. The amount of compensation is not before you today. There have been accommodations made during the negotiations. Certain things have changed. The city staff has attempted to accommodate the Beekmans during the negotiations, including restructuring, who is going to do what, was money going to be offered to the Beekmans for certain improvements and construction, or was it going to be done within the project itself? All of that is a discussion on how much compensation is going to be paid to the Beekmans. That does not have to do with the project necessity, whether it was planned in the greatest public good, least private injury, whether the specific acquisitions, the fee take, the public utility easement, and the slope and drainage easement on their property are necessary for the project, whether an offer was made, and an offer was made, and it's clear how much money they were offered, and it's clear and complete that it was made upon an appraisal. That they have an argument with how much that compensation should be and what should be included under different categories of items is not before you.
But we're not saying that we're not going to address the issues such as the fact that their motor home would be locked in. We're not saying we're not going to address those issues.
We're not saying that we would ...
Either what?
I'm not saying that I will not address those issues. We certainly want to know what their concerns are, and either through negotiation, hopefully, or through resolution, through unfortunate litigation. They will have the opportunity to present every damage that they think they have ... that has arisen due to this acquisition. They will have that opportunity, both ways.
Will they make their opposition to the council, or who would they ...
For right now, if you adopt, it would be through me. It would also be through the court, but it would both be, or could be, through negotiations and/or litigation, if you approve and adopt the resolution. But they certainly don't get shut under a carpet and not addressed.
Right, good. Public Works staff will continue to work with the Beekmans. We have made great pains to try to ensure that their motor home will be removed. We believe it will be, won't be landlocked. We're going to do everything possible so that it's not landlocked. We've made numerous accommodations. They wanted the driveway moved, we've moved that. A lot of what's been presented is a one-sided that we have not had a chance to rebut, but we are in this different sides of the same story in terms of what we're going to do. But a lot of it's trying to accommodate whether we have the contractor relocate the fence, or we give them money so they can relocate the fence. There's an argument of how much money that's worth. We're working with them, we'll continue to work with them, so we do not landlock their motor home.
Okay.
Further questions?
I think my only concern would be is that, and I understand everything you're saying, is that as you work with them, that we'll get a staff report as you progress through the process so that we understand what's going on.
You certainly will get updates either through potential settlement negotiations in a closed session and/or litigation updates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have, there's actually five recommendations here, is what staff is asking for, so is there a motion on the floor?
I'm going to move to accept the recommendations of the staff. I want it to be understood that I am very concerned about the Beekmans and what they've brought up. At the same time, I'm also concerned about the need to move forward with this project. And I'm making the motion, but I have space that our staff and our attorney will look out for their concerns as well.
And I'll second the motion with the same concerns Barbara's mentioned, and again, through the updates, we'll monitor the issues.
Okay, will we get any information? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments or questions?
I do want to make a few comments. After listening to the testimony from the Beekman family, I got to be honest, I'm worried about the situation that we're in right now. I have full confidence that our Public Works Director, Greg Halliday, is doing everything in his power to move this process along, but I'm concerned about some of the issues that have been brought up relative to Mr. Silver and his communication with the Beekman family. Working on the City Council for over three years now, I can tell you quite honestly that the Beekmans might not have always agreed with decisions that I've made here, but they've always been respectful and they've always been cooperative with the work that we've done here in the city. I'm fearful that if we shove this process down the Beekmans' throat tonight, instead of possibly giving them two more weeks to work with staff to put something together so that we don't have to take this route, that we're going to ruin that cooperation that's continued to build over the years. The Beekmans have a vested interest in the construction of this project. I don't think there's anyone in the Beekman family that would argue that their property is going to increase in value significantly when they're on the corner of that huge intersection that we're going to be constructing. But it's important if we want to continue to foster good relations with the Beekman family, that we don't shove something like this down their throat tonight. We're under, quite honestly, what seems to be questionable circumstances, so I'm not going to support tonight's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Call for the vote.
I think you turned ...
I'm sorry.
Just to remind the council, for the resolution to pass, it would require a two-thirds vote of the members of the council, not the members present, so it would need to be unanimous.
Okay, it's not two-thirds, it's all four, enough to say yes.
And that's what it is.
You're breaking it down into layman's terms, so they understand too.
Correct.
Okay. So then, can't call for the vote. Still call for the vote?
Correct.
I gotta call for the vote?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead. Please interject.
You can withdraw. You can withdraw.
Or withdraw.
And continue this for two weeks, as suggested. That's what I would suggest that the council do. If you take this and do a vote, it will necessitate re-noticing and possibly re-gathering of Level One and Two meetings pursuant to Caltrans requirements. A continuation of this would allow negotiations to continue, a continuation of this hearing to the following meeting, I don't know when that is, would allow you to then take a vote at that time.
And it has to be one of those two that made the motion?
I'm willing to withdraw my motion and to continue this to the next council meeting.
Is that a motion?
To withdraw the motion.
I would like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing in relation to the Beekman property until the meeting of December fifteenth. This will give the Beekman family the opportunity to work with city staff over the next two weeks to come to a resolution, which their track record with the City of Galt seems to indicate would be very likely.
I'll second that. Any further discussion or comments?
I don't want to withdraw.
You did withdraw your second, right?
Well, no, I didn't officially withdraw, but I will.
I thought you mentioned motion, the yes.
No, I will. So go ahead.
You have to restate all that?
No, we're good.
Okay. We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we'll continue and bring it back to the next council meeting. Okay. Number two.
Number two, public hearing to consider adoption of resolution of necessity determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain property and property interests in and to a portion of A&amp;M Enterprise Property, located south of Bosso Road, east of Crystal Way, for the Central Galt Interchange and State Route ninety-nine Improvement Project.
To continue on, I will dispense with the background and reason for the project. This is known as the A&amp;M Enterprise Property. Again, this is ninety-nine freeway, this is C Street Bosso Road, and this is the current Crystal. This is the A&amp;M property here. The property consists of nine acres of vacant parcel located on the south side of Bosso Road. This shows the location of the property relative to the proposed interchange. This is ninety-nine. This is C Street and Bosso Road. This is the existing Crystal. This is the relocation of Crystal that continues to couple it up to the extension of A Street. This shows the connection, and we're talking about acquisitions in this portion, which basically are from this point up to this portion of the property. All of this property is a remainder. We have several takes on this property. We have a partial take, fee acquisition of three thousand seven hundred and forty-four square meters, that's the main purple. We have a public utility easement acquisition of eight hundred and nine square meters. We have an overhead utility easement acquisition of a hundred and two point four square meters. We have a drainage easement acquisition of fifteen hundred and seventy-three square meters, and a temporary construction easement of seven hundred and eighty-eight square meters. And these are shown by the various different colors within this area. Crystal Way will be relocated and have a cul-de-sac ball that will remain in place, and the relocation will be here. This property will remain A&amp;M's. And the project, again, as to particular findings, we're going to go through the same six findings we did previously. Public interest and necessity require this project. And again, I'll just kind of recap these as before, going through the project. The no-bill alternative was not acceptable because it did not meet the purpose and need for the project. The overall public good requires that we complete the project. Finding number two, that the proposed project is planned or located in a manner that will be compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. In looking at this picture, just like with the Beekmans on the north, the relocation and the realignment of Crystal was required by current traffic design, the Caltrans design guidelines, in order to push the intersection to the east, to provide a greater separation, to allow traffic coming over the interchange, to top the crest of the curve, and then come back down based on site distance. It also requires, there's a requirement relative to intersection spacing from the couplets and the other connections north of A Street. The selection of Alternative thirteen A basically sets the geometrics and required that we acquire this particular issue of property. And working with the utility companies and SMUD, they came up with the required alignments for the relocation of utilities, the best alternative for the least impact, and they require the acquisition of some overhead utility and public utility easements across this property that could not be accommodated elsewhere from the properties. And then the actual construction area does require a temporary construction easement. Finding number three is that the property interests described in the resolution of necessity are necessary for the project. Again, based on the project's location, we have no option but to acquire this property. We cannot build the project without it because the need to realign Crystal Way and provide for the relocation of the various utility lines. Finding number four, the required offer pursuant to Government Code section has been made to the owner of record. This was made on September eighth, two thousand nine. Finding number five, relative to the fact that the subject property interests are being acquired for compatible use, such that the city's use of the subject property will not interfere with or impair the continued use of the subject property for the public use that exists or may reasonably be expected to exist in the future on the subject property. Again, we're going to be taking the property for a public use that is as good as what may come up in the future and will still be compatible with additional public uses that may be required. And lastly, finding number six, is that the use of the subject property decided to be taken is more necessary public use than the use to which the property is currently appropriated pursuant to California Code section civil procedure. Again, this is basically saying that our use is as important or more important than any other public use that would come along for condemnation such as utility line or other type of public purpose. That concludes the findings. We ask the council to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution of necessity.
We'll open the public hearing.
I have no speaker seats at this time.
No speaker seats? Close the public hearing. Does there any, does any member from the public wish to speak? Over for us, we have a recommendation by staff, comments from council members. If none, I'll ascertain a motion.
I would like to move staff's recommendation. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion, none? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item, please.
Public hearing to consider adoption of resolution of necessity determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain property and property interests in and the Wrangle property located south of Bosso Road, west of Franston Street for the Central Galt Interchange and State Route ninety-nine Improvement Project.
Second report?
Okay, the last property for council's consideration is known as the Wrangle property. It is a point three-two acre vacant property owned by Fidel and Maria Wrangle. This is the general location. This is ninety-nine, C Street Bosso Road. This is Franston. Council previously acquired several residential properties with relocated property owners. This was the current vacant lot that existed to the south. These were the other parcels. This again is the Wrangle property. The required acquisition is a full-take fee acquisition of twelve hundred and seventy-four square meters. Written offer to purchase a property was made on May first, two thousand nine. We're going to run through the same findings. This shows the full-take up in this area. This is the ninety-nine freeway, right up against the side of the freeway. Again, finding number one is that the public interest and necessity require the project. We talked before about the project need and the fact that the no-bill alternative did not provide the purpose and need for the project, and that it is needed for the greater good of the community relative to increasing interchange capacity, improving safety, and providing for improvements to support the general plan. Finding number two, the proposed project is planned or located in a manner that would be the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. Based upon Alternative thirteen A or almost all alternatives, given the close proximity of this property to the freeway, we really had no alternative but to move the freeway widening out over this property. The components on the, the existing development on the west side of the freeway dictated the greater good that we widened the majority of the project to the east, which required the acquisition of this particular property relative to the great differential, even with the use of walls to provide for, rather than slopes, the acquisition of this property was still required in order to provide the overall better selection of Alternative thirteen A. Finding number three is that the property interests described in the resolution of necessity are necessary for the project. Again, because of this location to the freeway, we have no choice but to acquire this property in order to build a freeway over the top of it. We can't move the freeway project, it's too close. We have no other option but to acquire this property. Finding number four, the offer required by Government Code section seventy-two, six, seven point two has been made. Again, this was made on September eighth, two thousand nine. I guess that's the wrong date, excuse me. Let me correct that. It was made on May first, two thousand nine. I have too many reports here. Finding five again is ... Finding five again is relative to that the subject property interests are being acquired for a compatible use such that the city's use of the subject property will not interfere with or impair the continued use of the subject property for the public use that exists or may reasonably be expected to exist in the future on the subject property. This area will be utilized for slope area for the freeway and can be used for other compatible public uses. And the last finding number six is that the use which the subject property is sought to be taken is a more necessary public use than the use to which the property is currently appropriated pursuant to California, California Code Civil Procedure. Basically, again, this is saying that our need and use for this property is as important or more important than any other use. We don't anticipate there will be one, but this is a finding that will protect us in the future. Again, that concludes the presentation. Request the council open the public hearing.
Open public hearing. No more speakers?
I have no speaker sheets at this time.
No speakers? We'll close the public hearing. Does any member from the public wish to speak at this time? If none, as the one before, there's a recommendation by staff. There's five items. Is there's any comments from council? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Double seconded, and no further comments or questions. We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Next item, under City Council, local hiring ordinance. That's okay. Councilmember Meredith.
Thank you. I covered a lot of the details regarding this local hiring ordinance at the meeting of November, I believe it was November third. Don't want to go back through all of those because staff, staff has also presented some information as well as my information in the council packet, which was available online and was provided to all council members. I'll just go over the, the brief staff report that I put in the agenda packet. On November third, I gave a presentation on the concept of a local hiring ordinance being implemented for the city of Galt. At the meeting, I provided a draft ordinance that was similar to one adopted in other cities across California. The draft was presented in what I considered to be near adoptable status with very little fine tuning left for the city attorney and city staff. I asked that this meeting to be provided with staff time to produce a final document that would be legally defensible. Unfortunately, progress was blocked on the proposal by a lack of support to move forward with staff. I am now before you asking for a different course of action with regard to my proposal. Instead of council implementing a cover-all ordinance that would become effective in December as I originally proposed, I would now like to propose adopting this ordinance on a trial basis beginning in early two thousand and ten. Taking this course of action allows staff to work this proposal into their schedules over the next few months, and it offers the opportunity to have local hiring placed on a priority list during council goal setting in January. In the spirit of such, I am not presenting a hard date for adoption, just the general hope that a trial period can begin in early two thousand and ten as I previously stated. I understand several of the reservations presented by council in early November regarding the effects that adopting such an ordinance could have on our ability to receive numerous bids on the projects we finance. These convert, these concerns have convinced me that it is best to adopt local hiring on a trial basis to see how effective and/or ineffective the program will be before a final formal adoption of new city policy is made. I am proposing that we implement local hiring guidelines for a period of six months, months, which would commence following the presentation in early two thousand and ten of a final draft in accordance with my request. Our unemployment rate in the city of Galt is eighteen point four percent and dictates that we try something to help put people back to work. If we just ignore the problem and hope that federal and state efforts to put America back to work succeed, we risk the very financial future of this city. Let's come together on this issue and show the community that we are willing to try new ideas and new concepts to improve the lives of the people we represent. Before we take testimony from the public, I just wanted to update a few things. The unemployment rate that was posted in my staff report was going off of numbers that were thirty, thirty days old. The new unemployment rate in the city of Galt, according to the Employment Development Department, is eighteen point nine percent, which means we've seen a half of a percentage point increase in the last thirty days, which in my, my opinion, signals the fact that this is an extremely, extremely difficult situation for the city. This is an attempt that I'm presenting to help curb the very important problems that we're facing in this community that stem from unemployment. I believe that there was a lot of concern on council's part at the last, the last meeting when I actually made this presentation regarding the applicability of this ordinance to our Central Gulf Interchange, which we just talked about tonight. I think it's important to note that staff did receive some documentation from the Department of Transportation that basically outlined the fact that this local hiring ordinance would not be able to be used on any federally funded projects, which means that even if we adopted the ordinance as I have it presented and we adopted it tonight as a cover-all, this would not apply to the Central Gulf Interchange because we are receiving federal funding for the project. With that, I'd like to hear testimony from the public and any concerns from the council.
Comments from public?
Okay, John Flotterbeck.
John Flotterbeck, I live in city of Galt. On the surface, I'd just like to say on the surface, this ordinance sounds good. I have some problems with it though. I'll give you a list of, I'll give you a few examples here of my problems. But like I said, to the public, this sounds good. And on the surface, it sounds, but there's a lot of problems. This ordinance will, we're already behind and on the time scheduled on some of our projects in the city. The state revolving fund loan will save the citizens of Galt about three million dollars in low interest loan. This city is already in jeopardy of not qualifying for that loan because of time restraints. This ordinance will be the final nail in the coffin and will cause the failure of the city's attempt to meet the criteria for that low interest loan. And this ordinance will be credited for that failure, and rightly so. Another concern should be worried about, we should be worried about the, the city's fines for out-of-compliance for meter installation. We're supposed to be, my understanding, our meter installation is supposed to be in January of this year. I don't know that we've even started yet. We're, we're behind in schedule in our work projects now, and this ordinance will do nothing but, but put a nail in the coffin of our low interest revolving fund loan. There's already a problem there, and this will do nothing but kill it. I do have another option that you could try that wouldn't have, have that kind of an impact on, on the city. But this, this option would kill our, our low interest loan, and that's three million dollars. And so I'm against it for that reason. Some other time or some other way maybe, but I'm concerned about our loan right now. And, and that's my main concern. And, and I think this, this would do it in. And, and like I said, I do have another option. If you'd like to hear it, but otherwise, I'm finished.
Let's hear it.
The word I hear that from. Right here.
Still got two and a half minutes.
Okay. There is one option that wouldn't interfere with contract work schedules when the city advertised for contractor bids. The city at the same time could advertise for anyone interesting being considered for new possible hires to work on that project. The city could receive these applications and compile a list of craftsmen such as welders, sheet metal workers, seam finishers, electricians, laborers, et cetera, that would be willing to work on this project. This list then would be given to the contractor, and the contractor would have the option of hiring some percentage, some percentage of employees from the city of Galt. And for each person hired, the contractor would be given credit on some scale to be determined as meeting the bid requirements along with the contract bid dollar amount. These two variables then would be included in considering which bidder receives the contract. If council wants, they could even be involved in the selection process, and they could even volunteer to be on that committee to select the contractor. This procedure would be even give those council, well, I stated that. This procedure would even give those council members a needed exposure to whom and what duties the contractor is to perform. At present, council knows very little about what's in the contract and what duties the contractor is to perform. So, that would be one way. You're giving them an option, and, and the city would compile a list of, of various craftsmen, and they'd have the decision then to, if they wanted to hire from these, this pool that the city compiled, and, and would, it would credit them, and some, it'd give them credit toward the bid, the final bid. And that would have to be determined. But other than that, mandatory, something mandatory, to me, it would be wrong. And that's what this ordinance is right now, mandatory. And I, I don't think that's right. This here gives them an option, and it would, it would, I think, serve a purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to John.
Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, I live in Galt. I'm concerned, and this is good that we're discussing this like this. I have a question, though. There, there seems to be a small loophole in the ordinance if you did put it in, and it could be good faith effort. Now, what defines good faith? I tried, but I couldn't, and that's it. Is there going to be a criteria? Is it going to be strong enough? The thing is, is I've been waiting now for four weeks, and I was hoping Andrew Meredith was going to bring it up. The unemployment you came up with, but how many carpenters? How many electricians? How many whatever do we have in Galt that can be hired? You said they, they were going to give it to you a month ago, and I was just wondering if you got it.
Well, I told you that I was waiting on information.
Well, I know.
What the Employment Development Department did say is that they will provide that service for the city of Galt for a fee because it's outside of the statistical data that they accumulate for their reporting purposes to the community. They can only acquire that data through special circumstances, which we would have to pay for.
So we're going to have to pay more money to get statistics to see if we really need it.
Well, nineteen percent unemployment is the big enough.
I understand, but if you don't have the people, and I'm not against it necessarily, I like a program of some type. Even Mr. Flotterbeck's didn't sound so good, not so bad. But I, I think we need some more statistics. And if we can't get them unless we got to pay for them, I don't know if it's very expensive, but we may not have a lot of carpenters in town. We may not have a lot of Christians in town. We may have a few journeymen, but, you know, we just may not have it. The reason I, I'm asking this is that there's one other area, too. I guess there's a federal law that you must hire a certain percentage of this or a certain percentage of that. And I think one of them is minorities. And you haven't even addressed that in this ordinance that you're proposing. If you, if you put a, well, anybody can come in, and we have to get fifty people, and there's less minorities hired than there is non-minorities hired. They both need jobs. Who gets the priority? And I'm wondering what other cities have done, because if they do this, they may be okay with minority hiring, but not with the city hiring. Which one do they take?
Well, let me just point out the fact that this ordinance would not supersede federal labor laws in any way.
Well, I understand.
Contractor, if he's awarded the project in the city of Galt and has to follow the local hiring guidelines, he still has to file, he still has to follow California and federal labor codes just as on any other project.
Well, that's why the information, I think, would be needed because in this town, as of, well, maybe a couple of years ago, we've had approximately thirty-three point two percent Hispanic, and that's a large percentage. Now, the nation has a twelve point five oh percent, but this town is overloaded with so-called, you can call them that, minorities. And that's just that one area. Now, what I'd like to know is, is that hasn't been addressed in your ordinance. So I'm thinking maybe some of this, the, most of them are farmworkers. So they're not going to be able to, to do the work that you're asking for.
Well, the reason it's not in the ordinance, Mr. Baldwin, is because it doesn't have to be in the ordinance. We also don't have any ordinance that you can't stand on the top rung of a six-foot tall ladder, but the contractor knows he's required to follow OSHA guidelines and not allow work to be performed in that manner. Contractors know that they have to follow state and federal guidelines when they perform work.
And who checks them?
There's various agencies that check them. The contractor state licensing board investigates complaints. OSHA investigates complaints.
Well, what I'm.
There's a lot of agencies that, that do it.
Is that the contractors and subcontractors that hire their own, some of the subcontractors do it too. Who checks them? And what it's opening up a box is, is paperwork major. I'm not against doing a program. I'm just saying that this can open up some major problems for Galt. And I'm all for getting jobs in Galt, and some system can do it. But I'm thinking you're going to run into quite a few of the programs that are out there that's going to conflict with what we want to do. Now, I know Stockton's doing this, and they're revising theirs maybe a little bit, and they're challenging certain things. And all it takes is one little lawsuit by somebody, and you're in trouble. So it's just a thought, keep in mind, to redo this again, maybe look at it, maybe a little harder. I know you can't spend money on it, research, but you're going to have to spend something to get the facts because you don't know if we even have people in Galt. But they need work, but do they need the work that you want to give them? I don't know. Now, years ago, my, my time's running out, but this country had a problem too. And they, they developed, the government even came into it then and put a lot of people to work, the CCC, and, and it made a major difference. And they were sweeping streets. They were building projects for parks and stuff. And, and it really brought the economy back again, gave them that little kick in the rear end. And maybe that's another solution that you might want to start getting. The people that don't have real positive trades can, can do their thing and maybe learn a little, and then from there, they can progress. So there's other ways to do it. It's a good idea. I think your heart's in the right place. I appreciate that. I just say it needs a little more detail. Thank you.
Okay, Nicole Garing?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Galt City Council. I, you expressed my concerns last time. I don't have a whole lot more to add, but just the genuine accountability to the taxpayers. They don't want unnecessarily more higher costs. They favor a fair and open competitive bidding process, and you're going to get higher prices for your bids. I'm not necessarily sure the taxpayer is in favor of that. You're going to have smaller contractors that are unable to do some of the paperwork. They're going to say it's, it's an unnecessary burden for them. So then they're not going to consider bidding on your projects. There's going to be an effect there. And then there's also some discriminatory language in this, in this hiring ordinance when regards to apprenticeship programs. You want to make sure that anybody in any apprenticeship program that's state-approved that happens to live in Galt can work on these projects. So you don't want to, there's a, you know, some language in here that says, if there are some programs that have sixty percent of graduates, then use those. And if there aren't, then, then use any program. So is this geared toward a specific trade that's hidden in here? Or is, I kind of want to know how that sixty percent number is derived, and why would we, you know, be not offering opportunities to students or veterans that, that happen to not be in the right apprenticeship program? And all apprenticeship programs are state-approved by the state of California. I know there was some talk about state guidelines. Those are all state-approved programs, whether they have one graduate or whether they have a hundred graduates. Those are all state-approved by the state of California with the same criteria. And finally, there was a comment I read from a contractor in the Galt Herald, and I'll just read the sentence here, is what he said. As a twenty-five-year construction supervisor, I can tell you from experience that if I can't bring my A team, then it will cost you more, sometimes a lot more. So I'll just leave you with that. But just remember genuine accountability to the taxpayers. They want the, the best value for the best price. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? See someone getting up some. Any other members from the audience wishing to speak?
Are you Scott?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Scott Steelman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name, pardon my voice, been scratched up all day. I don't know, I've got a little bug going, but. My name is Scott Steelman, and I represent well over a thousand of the most diverse, skilled, and productive tradesmen and women in the industry. skilled and productive tradesmen and women in the industry, many of whom live within your community. I'm here tonight to implore you to support Councilmember Meredith's vision for creating local jobs through the implementation of a local hiring ordinance. First of all, Mr. Meredith, thank you for having the vision to bring this forward to the community. In such times of economic peril, it is encouraging to encounter elected officials working to find ways to help the residents that elected them to office. I appreciate it. The local hiring ordinance Mr. Meredith is proposing is important for the city of Galt. The residents of Galt fund the projects that this ordinance would apply to through property and sales tax that they pay. Adopting local hiring guidelines will give the residents of Galt an opportunity to benefit from the high-paying prevailing wage jobs created on the public works projects that their tax dollars are financing. Without a local hiring requirement, Galt residents have very little chance of working on the projects that their tax dollars fund. Is it fair that your residents pay taxes through huge construction projects without having the opportunity to work on them? I don't think so. Representatives from the ABC want to scare the five of you into thinking that one of two scenarios will occur. Number one, you will create an uncompetitive bid climate in the city that only favors a few parties. Number two, the lack of skilled local labor in Galt will result in projects being more expensive because of additional time required to train employees. The real truth about the statements above are very clear. Number one, first of all, public works jobs bid using Mr. Meredith's local hiring will be very competitive. All parties, union or non-union, will have an equal playing field to operate on. Please remember that prevailing wage laws were established in the same spirit. On just the union side of the construction industry, there are five hundred and fifty skilled workers in the city of Galt. There are probably another seven hundred, at least, on the unrepresented side. Claims that a lack of skilled workers exist in Galt is both wrong and insulting to the In closing, I implore you to take a stand for your own community and make sure your residents have an opportunity to attain good-paying local jobs. If your residents have more money on hand, I assure you, the money will circulate in a Galt community through local shops and businesses that really could use the additional income. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Bob Williams and I'm a non-resident of Galt. I help represent approximately sixteen hundred and fifty active and retired union electricians. That equates to a thousand and twelve active, two hundred and eighteen apprentices and four hundred and sixteen retired electricians. Moreover, I would like to say that I help represent all electricians working in the electrical industry. In essence, I would say that I help protect the wages, the benefits, the training and lift families out of poverty and exploitation. That's what public works projects do. Tonight, there are Galt residents who are jobless and looking for income to pay their mortgage and to buy crude, gas and the need to heat their home for their children. This is your opportunity to help. Tonight, I come to ask you to represent the Galt construction residents and constituents living within the Galt city limits. This issue of localizing the work in the Galt city limits is to protect the residents who pay property taxes and sales tax to support the very projects being talked about in this ordinance. With this ordinance, you can stand up to your constituents. Let them know that you are making an effort to secure work for them. You have a chance to show bravery and leadership to the Galt residents that I speak about. After all, giving your constituents the first opportunity at the construction work in the city of Galt is the right thing to do. Why would you let city construction be constructed by out-of-town contractors who import their construction workers who are not residents, do not pay property taxes and no sale tax? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no speakers. Anyone else?
No one else from the public? Comments from council?
I wanted to make a few comments, first off. I think that I probably let this presentation, the beginning of November, get a little too personal. I think that I let this get a little farther away from the merits of the presentation than I probably should have and I think all five of us probably showed emotions that weren't necessarily applied towards the merits of what I was proposing. I know that this might be a shot in the dark, but nineteen percent unemployment rate in our community requires some type of an effort to make a turnaround. And if this project doesn't work after a six-month trial period, then, you know, all we've really lost is a little bit of effort. If we don't attempt to do something and we just question the decision to not move forward with this over the next five years, I think the repercussions are going to be a lot worse. So, I just wanted to leave it at that.
Comments from other councilmen?
I have some. Actually, since the last council meeting, I have given additional thought to this proposal and have actually met with two representatives from the union, one from carpenters' union and one from drywall union. And we had a nice sit-down talk and I think we came to the agreement that Stockton and Galt are quite different. And they were very much in favor of what Stockton is doing, but then they also recognized that Galt doesn't have the capacity that Stockton has. But aside from that, I've always had the belief that people should be hired and given jobs because of their ability, not because of where they may or may not live or their sex or some of the other reasons. I think the best way to provide our community with jobs and opportunities is to attract business and industry where the jobs will last longer than just a particular public works project. By the same token, I know that in the city of Galt, we have a lot of people, tradesmen, workers that live here and work out of town. And one of my concerns is if we adopt something like this and other cities and jurisdictions do the same, you know, these people that live here but work out of town are going to have to deal with the unemployment instead of the others. So, I just don't want to trade unemployment for more unemployment. Hope that makes sense to you. In addition to some philosophical reasons why I would not support this proposal, I feel like it's been demonstrated that at this point in time, this is not a good time for We don't have the staff, we don't have the budget to experiment with something like this. I also know that in the staff report, it did mention, and you brought that up too, that there'd be some problems with our projects that have federal funding if we used, excuse me, if we accepted this proposal. So, at this point, I do not feel that there'd be any long-term benefit to the city of Galt and the community, but I can see a lot of possible problems, including increased costs. I think the whole procedure is going to be complicated through enforcing it, so I have a hard time supporting it now or in the future.
Well, I supported it when Andrew brought it forth last time. I'm going to support it tonight and I'm going to tell you why. What he's asking for is nothing more than a pilot program to try, an opportunity to bring work to those that live here in the city of Galt. I've not seen one other person bring anything forth that would help those that live here. We're sitting at about a nineteen percent unemployment rate. The state of California is spending twenty million dollars a day to pay those people who are unemployed currently. We, in Galt, are one of the major beneficiaries of that twenty million dollars. I would like to see it turn that tide around. I don't see this project that he's proposing as being the solution to all our problems, but every little thing, every little change we can make that can help contribute and bring jobs within this community for the people that live here is important and it should be important to all of us. I have the utmost faith in those who live in this community. If they have the skills and the ability and they qualify and we have projects which we are solely using our money for and they have been contributing through their taxes, whether it be property or sales tax or any other tax that they've paid, I don't think it is unreasonable that they shouldn't be included in the process of the projects that we bring forth here. So, I think there's plenty of room in here for adjustments. It's a trial basis, six months. We need to be trying something. We talk about staff time and I can appreciate staff time, but I will tell you that once you put something in place, once you develop the procedures, the paperwork, it will run very smoothly in most cases. I work for the state of California. Anybody who's worked for any agency knows that before anything's implemented, procedures are developed and the process is put in place and then therefore the services are available to meet those demands and needs. In this economy, to say that it's going to affect the bids, I'm going to question that myself. There's a lot of unemployed people out there. They're going to bid what they're going to bid because they're hungry. So, I don't see this program in itself going to affect that and I do not see it affecting the competitiveness of the bidders. So, I'm going to support him tonight. I think we need to do everything we can and I think any little bit we can do to help those that live in this community, we need to do it and we need to stand together, you know? Maybe if more people were thinking like this, maybe we wouldn't have so many jobs outsourced outside the country. Maybe our unemployment wouldn't be as high. So, I'm going to stand tall with him today. I'm going to say, "This is what we need, more ideas like this," and I'm going to support him on it because I want to see our people go to work.
Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, this time of the year, it seems like the unemployment is always way down. You know, there's the canneries, the produce, the farms, but I just find it hard that I would tell a contractor basically whom they will and will not hire. I know that they strive to do the best they can and I know there are some areas down here where people do get jobs, unfortunately, the jobs aren't just there. Example, you know, I'm a contractor and say I have twenty employees, you know, it's XYZ company. And these guys have worked for me for ten to eighteen years and I get this contract with the city of Galt and it's not Caltrans or whatever, but I'm really happy. We pass this ordinance. Which one of those four to six individuals that I tell, "Hey, the good news is we got the job." Bad news is, I got to tell them they don't get to go. But on the other hand, when you do a job like that, there's usually, you know, one or two employees that can't make it for whatever reason. So, I really believe, and I know factual with some of the places I work, that they do hire a lot of local employees that meet all the criteria. And there is a pending litigation on some city and I don't know what the status is on that, but I'm concerned also with the impact on staff. I know it's going to be a lot more than we even think. In fact, I would venture to guess that we would probably have to hire an employee. So, I won't support the local hiring.
I appreciate the concerns that the mayor and councilwoman Payne brought up regarding the fortune and the future of employees that are working for contractors from out-of-town that pick up projects in this community, but the simple truth of the matter is, I was not elected to this position by the employees of those companies. I was elected to this position by the residents of the city of Galt and it is my responsibility in this capacity to do everything in my power to ensure their well-being, their safety and their financial future. And the presentation that I put forward in November and that I'm reiterating again tonight is my plan on creating local jobs in this community. Now, you've seen my plan. I presented it. If it doesn't go through tonight, I implore the members of this community to step forward and demand another plan. If my plan isn't the right one, demand that your local leaders present one to you because nineteen percent unemployment is simply unacceptable. And if we're not taking steps to change it, the future of this city is seriously in jeopardy. Thank you.
Well, the recommendation is that action as deemed, so what is the pleasure of council?
I would like to make my motion, which is clearly stated in my staff report.
I'm going to second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote?
No.
Aye.
No.
Didn't pass? Next item?
Next item? Capital Improvement Program Project Update, November two thousand nine.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My pleasure to present the update to the capital improvement program. We bring this back to the council every couple of months and keep you apprised of the progress we're making on a number of all the capital improvement projects that are in the current year budget. There are forty-seven of them, most of which are carried out by our public works department. We just talked about staff workload and so forth and I know that they're working very diligently to bring these projects forward and you can see we've made significant progress on many of them. There are some that are falling behind schedule partly due to insufficient staff to carry those forward, but we're, public works is doing a great job in moving the projects forward in an expeditious manner. I'm not going to go through each of the projects, but again, I wanted to let the council know where we are as a city as far as moving these projects forward and this information also is placed up on our website, so members of the public can go and take a look to see where we are with all the projects, which we think is important. So, I'll just open it up to council if you have any specific questions about the status of any of these projects. I or any of my staff will be happy to answer your questions.
Questions from council members?
I have no questions.
There are no questions?
I do have a question. The pedestrian safety improvements for the railroad crossings. Okay. We have in here that this is going to go out. Now, this is behind schedule, right?
It is.
Okay, so, we have the design all completed and the bid will go out this month, December, right? Because this is December, we've got December, January bid.
That's an absolute definite maybe. We are currently waiting, as we have for the last three months, on Caltrans to issue the authorization to go out to bid. The reason the project was deferred was because Caltrans rescinded the grant. They ran out of money, they swapped money to a different source that had to be approved by the CTC. They added about a six-month delay, totally outside of our control. We're now waiting at Caltrans mercy to issue the authorization when CTC heard the, approved the new funding in October. We call them weekly to find out where the project is at. We cannot bid the project until we get Caltrans' blessing on the authorization, otherwise all the costs are not reimbursable. So, it's our anticipated schedule based on what they told us, we're going to receive that in December and once we receive that, we will go out to bid the next day. But I can't force Caltrans to issue that document to us. All we can do is be a squeaky wheel.
How much longer before we, how long before you anticipate getting word from Caltrans?
We talk to them weekly and they say it's imminent, but they've been saying it's imminent for the last six weeks.
We anticipated getting this done last year and here we are coming into two thousand and ten. I'm just a little concerned because those, you know, those pedestrian safeways, you know, we've been talking about how important they were to get implemented, put in place rather. So, I'm hoping that by the end of December or early January, you'll get word.
So am I. We continue to call them every week, find out what the status is, when we can expect to have it. At this point, I don't anticipate construction starting until the spring.
Okay.
I agree. That's public safety. Any other comments?
I have no other comments.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item, please.
Community Development Department, California Energy Commission- Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program, Formula Grant, and U.S. Department of Energy, EECPG, competitive grant.
The item before you tonight is actually two separate grant applications. The one is the California State Energy Commission, the U.S. The other one is the U.S. Department of Energy. The California's grant is a non-competitive grant. Jason has been working on that section. I don't know, Jason, if you want to talk about that one or if I'm going to just briefly go over. In that one, based on the city's size, we're eligible for about one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We talked about it earlier this evening. Looking at the list of pre-approved projects, we are recommending that we go with the LED lighting for streetlights. It's estimated between ninety and one hundred and thirty-three lights could be changed out. It'd be more energy efficient, which is saving on the energy side. Also, it's more cost-effective by the type of bulb that would be placed, replaced. The deadline on this one is January twelfth. There is a grant, or there is a resolution attached that would provide authorization and direction to staff to submit for that grant. Staff does recommend to proceed with that one. The second grant is a non-competitive grant. There are, communities can apply up to five million dollars for various types of improvements. However, again, it is competitive. They're estimating that there will be fifteen to sixty awards nationwide for small cities under the population of thirty-five thousand. Looking at the criteria for selection, I'm not sure that we would be the most competitive, but we are submitting in conjunction with SMD. We're partnering with SMD on this one. They've been a great deal of help. We're doing the actual application. Actually, Sandy's been working on that. And then we're coordinating some of the paperwork in an attempt to meet that deadline of December fourteenth. We did, we're looking through the application, and Sandy researched it, contacted SMD. We find nothing that requires an MOU, or excuse me, a resolution of approval. We are asking that you provide direction to the city manager and authorization to execute any and all, basically related documents, because we will not have a council meeting between now and the fourteenth. He would then be able to execute whatever needs to be done. This grant has three components. One is called the Whole Neighborhood Building Energy Efficiency retrofit program. Basically, we've identified the geographic area in the city. They would like to target about two thousand homes within this area where you would have a combination of older residents, some commercial, some industrial, potentially schools, where the program would provide monies, rebates, and energy audits to property owners for various types of retrofit programs, whether it's windows or insulation, heating, air, photovoltaic systems. This would also be coupled with the California First Financing Plan, which we council authorized us to apply for, which is the pilot program, so that the bill can be put on your tax bill and deferred over a period of time. So, that's, if we could get that, that would be a great thing. The second component, we've identified to do retrofit, a retrofit project both at the MSC building, mainly lighting, interior lighting, and at the police department for photovoltaic system for energy generation. That amount is five hundred thousand, excuse me, I need to back up. We estimated four million dollars for the whole community, the whole neighborhood program, five hundred thousand on the government building energy efficiency retrofit. The last one, we're asking for an additional five hundred thousand dollars for streetlight energy retrofits, which would blend really nicely with the previous grant of one hundred and thirty-three thousand in order to address streetlights replacements with more energy-efficient bulbs. That concludes staff's report. Unless you have any questions, we would recommend approval of the two recommended actions.
Sounds good.
Counsel, sorry.
Whatever you want to comment on.
Yeah, I think it's excellent. But, I got to tell you, Greg, I really want to thank you because I've been on council three years. Andrew and I, when we first came on council, the street lighting was one of the big, one of the first issues we brought to council and brought to you, and you, I know we've nagged you about it over the last three years, and it's always been an issue, and it's always come down to money, you know? But, I'm really glad that the funding is out there somewhere, that we've now found it, that we can finally go to the community and say we may, providing we get the money, we at least can have something where we can go back to the community and say, "Okay, we can actually make these type of changes we've been talking about." Especially during these harder times. And I think those streetlights will come in handy because a lot of people have a lot of concerns out there about crime and other issues. And I know we've talked about that, but, you know, it means a lot to them. And I'm just glad to see this coming, coming up and something we may be liable, so we can work with. So, I really want to thank you for all the hard work you've put into it and taken on all the nagging and complaining, but I'm really supportive of it, so.
I do hope it passes. And Don, as you know, we talk about it at the Safety Committee, too.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
So, it's a big, big deal.
And thanks, staff, and I'm hoping we get the grant. I reiterate what you're saying. No further comments? I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments? None? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Andrew stepped out.
Okay. Next item? Finance Department, City of Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand nine, Memorandum on Internal Control and Required Communications for the year ended June thirty, two thousand nine, Single Audit Report for the year ended June thirty, two thousand nine, An Agreed Upon Procedures Report on Compliance with Prop 111, Two Thousand Eight, Two Thousand Nine Appropriations Limit Implement. I'm done.
Okay. There's quite a few reports. Thank you.
You thought you were just going to carry on your report for you?
I was waiting for the pause and see if she was going to go ahead and start with the report. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. This evening, staff is recommending that council accept the reports as mentioned by the city clerk. I would like to go over a couple of the sections of the reports this evening to give you a brief overview of what's presented before you for your benefit and for the audience as well. Each year, the city does prepare the comprehensive annual financial report. And it's basically our method of reporting the financial condition of the city and transactions that have occurred throughout the year. The CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, is broken down into three sections, the introductory section, and one of the items in that section is the transmit a letter. And in the letter, it mentions some of the projects that we undertook over the last fiscal year, and some of the projects were the general plan, which we know was adopted in April of two thousand nine, a major undertaking. Infrastructure, as you heard this evening, Central Gulf Interchange was a big project that was initiated during the year or continued during the year. Economic development, we know that there's the Second Annual Winter Bird Festival that was conducted. There's other projects downtown related to redevelopment agency, the senior mixed-use project, the remodeling of the Otzel's Building and so forth. Public safety was another major undertaking. The sales tax ballot measure, known as Measure R, was successfully approved by the voters. The city actually received its first advance on sales tax for the measure in June, and the officer, the very first officer, which is fully funded by Measure R funds, came on board on September first of the current fiscal year. Overall, the economic factors, as we all know, the national crisis that the city is experiencing as well. We know that it's been affecting our retail, our commercial, property values, new construction. We know that revenues actually went down for the city by four million dollars, primarily charges for services. And that's really a decrease in the building activity, a huge impact to our capital acquisition funds. On the expenditure side, we know that our governmental activity actually, the expenditures increased from twenty-four point two million to twenty-four point eight million. And that was primarily due to streets and roads, again, related to Central Gulf Interchange project. The largest net cost to the city was public safety, at a net cost of over six million dollars. Again, there's very minor amounts that are recovered, cost for services. So, public safety is the largest net cost to the city. The next section of the CAFER is the financial section. And I would like to just highlight two of the funds, one of them being the general fund and the other is the cultural recreation fund. In the general fund, there was an update provided by the city manager on November third, and the information provided to council was pre-audit information. As the audit has been completed, however, we do know that there were minor adjustments. There was nothing significant that has changed since November third to now. So, the information that was presented at that meeting basically is true today. But, I do want to highlight a couple of the areas that we have. We know that revenues were down by about two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, just under three percent below the revised estimate. Again, two of the large components there are property taxes. We know that the property tax amounts have gone down due to the housing market and the reductions in the assessed value estimated by the county assessor. One of the items that has happened is the state has impacted and decided to take away some of our property tax monies. Eight percent will actually be the shift from the city of Galt, about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. In an effort to minimize that impact to the city, the city has volunteered in the Prop 1A Securitization Program, and we will be receiving those funds shortly, half in January, half in May. The other large general fund revenue source is sales tax. And we know that we came in just about twenty-six thousand dollars under the original estimate. Again, we know that the economy has impacted the general fund sales activity, and we're hoping that we have two new businesses coming on board, or that are on board now, the Tractor Supply and Ride Aid. So, we hope that this will offset some of the sales tax activity that we did experience that decline. The general fund, the reserves are fully funded for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nine. We do know that one of the items that we have funded in reserves has to do with state takeaway. Again, they decided to take some money away. In fact, there's going to be about one point three million dollars of redevelopment funds that they are currently looking at taking away over the next two fiscal years, this year and next. So, we will have to continue to be very vigilant in efforts to try to minimize those state takeaways and so that we can use those funds here locally instead of at the state level. The other funded, the cultural recreation fund, as previously reported, revenues were up primarily with the Galt market. So, that was definitely good news. The other good news in the cultural recreation fund was that expenditures were down, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, primarily in part-time savings and personnel costs. So, the financial condition of the cultural recreation fund, and there is a separate report presented this evening, but the impact, even though it does have an item that we still have to address as far as the level of programs that we're supporting, the good news is, is that revenues were a little higher than budgeted and expenditures were a little bit less than budgeted. So, it's definitely good news. The last section of the CAFER is the statistical section. That basically presents some additional information, demographic information, and values and so forth. And it covers about a ten-year period where information is available. The next report presented is the Memorandum on Internal Controls and the Required Communications. Basically, there was one comment that was noted by the auditors, and it had to do with our procurement, our disbursement process. Staff will be implementing various processes right now, ensuring that we use purchase orders and basically look at packing clips and so forth. So, we are developing processes right now in, so that we can be compliant, and we will not have a recurrence of this one finding for the city of Galt. The next report is the Single Audit Report. And basically, the city does receive various federal and state grant funds, and this is an area that is subject to a separate audit. There was not a finding in the current year. However, there was a finding in the prior year, and it had to do with infrastructure valuation. We have been working closely with the public works department, and we feel very confident in this process that is in place right now. And there were no findings as of the end of the current fiscal year. The final report is the Agreed Upon Procedures for Compliance with Prop 111. And this has to do with the appropriations limit. Again, the report was, the auditors had to review the calculation that was performed. There were no exceptions noted. So, with that, there are no costs associated with the information presented so far. We would, upon acceptance by council, implement these numbers into the budget documents and will go forward. But, with that, I would ask that you accept the reports as presented this evening. I am joined this evening with both the county managers, Donna Krug and Michelle Neely. We also have Ms. Catherine Nguyen. She's a partner with the independent firm of Maze and Associates. So, with that, I'd be happy to address, or all of us would be happy to address any questions that council may have this evening.
I got a question for you. And as, I mean, cultural recreation funds, did we recently pay off a bond or a debt in the cultural recreation fund? Did we, or is there one coming, it's coming due?
We haven't as of yet. I believe the sports complex is still outstanding, and the other one is the lease revenue bonds for the Galt market, which was used to fund the Galt market improvements, the northeast area, and some parkland. And that debt...
But, it's coming, but we're...
Yes, right. And that is the most insignificant of the total amount. I believe the annual repayment there is around thirty thousand dollars a year. And the most significant is actually the northeast area, or is actually the lease revenue bond for cultural recreation. Okay. So, five hundred thousand. So, once that one...
When was that paid off? Two thousand twelve, I believe, for the big one.
I believe it was two thousand twelve, but I was trying to think of the sports complex. The lease revenue is due on April first, two thousand twelve, and the annual payments are just about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on principal. So, it should free up just over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars principal and interest.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have just a couple.
Okay.
First, I wanted to bring this to the attention of everybody here, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting presented to the city of Galt. And I want to congratulate and thank our financial department.
Thank you.
And, in addition to that, I do have a question. If you go to Management Decisions and Analysis, page twelve, something that is outstanding is the intergovernmental change, which is four hundred and forty-three point nine percent, that's a percent of change. It's terrific, but you want to explain, is that going to affect us in the next budget period? Or, I mean, we had a big, huge increase. Is that going to continue, or is that a one-time thing?
Actually, the increase is due to amounts that we receive for street projects. So, that has to do with some of our intergovernmental revenues, like Fund Ten. We receive like RSTP funds or, or some of the other funds that we receive, STIP funds. So, as projects are, or expenditures are incurred, our reimbursement for some of those amounts are received. So, that happened to be a high year, so that went up. And I don't recall with the budget year as well. Some of the projects actually, like even Central Gulf Interchange, we budgeted a certain amount that had been expended last fiscal year, and those have been carried forward into the new fiscal year. So, we would expect that those amounts would carry forward as well. But, the primary amount there had to do with grants that were received for streets and roads. And we also received monies for the home loan security, which I believe the chief expended last year. So, it just depends on what funds are available out there. Some of them are, but some of them are reoccurring based on the project.
And my last question is on page fifteen in the same section under General Fund Budgetary Highlights. It says, "Within Community Development Block Grant Funds Reflected Within Intergovernmental, Which Was Not Received As Estimated." Would you just, is that the same thing that we just talked about, or...
That specific grant had to do with the, it was CDBG funds, and it was earmarked for the Lincoln Way parking lot. And so, that project was originally anticipated to have been initiated in the last fiscal year. And I believe it was carried forward into the new one. So, that was the amount that you see that was not received. So, that was considered a negative variance.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from staff? If none, I'll ask for a proposal for accepting.
Move to accept the audit report?
I'll second.
No further discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Here, next item?
City of Galt Culture and Recreation Fund for the year ended June thirty, two thousand nine, financial statement.
Thank you. As a way of background, a couple of years back, council directed staff to add an additional expanded scope for the cultural recreation fund. They wanted to be sure that the city was in compliance with AB three seven seven three, which basically said that all monies that were generated from certain property, the old fairgrounds property, was used for cultural recreation purposes. So, since that time, we have continued to add a little bit more emphasis. It still is on a statistical basis, on the sample. Not a hundred percent of the receipts or expenditures are audited. However, they do provide just certain procedures so that we are able to at least issue the report separately. I know that we are or are not in compliance with AB three seven seven three. The audit did not disclose any significant findings or variances. The report is also included within the city's financial. The report is also included within the city's financial. This is just a separate report, just to present compliance with AB 3773. So, if council has any questions of me, or staff, or the auditor, Catherine Nguyen, then I, we would ask for acceptance as well.
Comments or questions from council? If none, we have a motion.
Move to accept the audit report on the Culture and Recreation Fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No further comments, questions? We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public Works Department, Walker Community Park Phase 1A Playground Equipment.
Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works Department. Staff's recommendation is that the city council selects vendor NSP3 as a provider for playground equipment for the Walker Community Park Phase 1A, and also authorize the Director of Public Works to purchase the playground equipment and impertinent items for $73,009. At the September 22nd, 2009 council meeting, the city manager was authorized to execute a contract to construct the Walker Community Park Phase 1A with Goodland Landscape Construction in the amount of $3,292,000. That work is currently underway. As awarded, the construction contract did not include the purchase or installation of the playground equipment and adjacent surfacing. This is a kind of a site plan. The, the playground area is between, West Elm or Road is the north boundary. You have two turf soccer fields. Here's the playground area, and then Phase 1A also includes the synthetic turf combination football soccer field right there. And then, this is a close-up of, if you will, of, if you will, the area available for the playground equipment. Staff elected to have the playground equipment provided separately by using California Multiple Awards Schedule CMAS, also frequently known as the State Bidders List. Doing so would allow the city to have a greater selection by soliciting, comparing pricing proposals from many different playground equipment providers, and overall costs would also be reduced by eliminating the general contractor's markup of the playground equipment if it had been included in the original construction contract. Staff sent out requests for proposals in early October to all 10 CMAS-listed playground equipment providers. As the prior use of the park property was a dairy farm operated by the Walker family, which the park is named after, proposals, proposers were asked to incorporate farm, dairy, agricultural theme, if possible, into their play equipment design. Staff received seven responses out of the 10. Staff reviewed and evaluated the proposals and selected the recommended provider based on the following criteria: overall look of their present proposals, providing the most varied play equipment concepts, creative design, incorporation of the theme, aspects of their equipment that would reduce maintenance or vandalism issues, and then kind of the cost value received. NSP3 was the selected preferred provider, say that 10 times fast, based on their creative incorporation of the dairy theme theme into the design, and also their costs. Kind of a, this is the layout, be shown you more details later. This is what's called a play dozer. It's play equipment specifically for ages two to five. You also have concrete, kind of a haystack, climbing some hot, what are called hop rocks. Then, we have a cow sculpture, and then, we have cot swings right over in here. In this area, which is sand, we'll have two single kind of hay, hay bales, kind of like impromptu seating for someone watching their toddlers in the play dozer area, and then you have the larger equipment area over in this area for ages five to 12. This is a 3D color rendering of the, of the proposal from NSP3. As mentioned, here's the haystack, here's one hop rock, here's another one, there's cow sculpture, play dozer, the single. You also, in addition, have decorative elements to kind of invoking kind of a barn, and then the play structure itself, a larger play structure, kind of has like a silo theme, and in addition with the, kind of the barn door elements designed on the side. This is just another close-up view of the larger play structure, and then, close-ups of the, some of the other playground elements, the play dozer, the, the cow sculpture, and the larger haystack bale also. In addition, NSP3 was the only one of, of the top three selected vendors that hold a California small business status with the state, and the benefit to the city there is under CMAS, there's a payment of what's called a CMAS administration fee, which is typically 1.77, but under the program, that fee is waived if it's a designated small, small business, and that resulted in additional savings, about $1,200. Some details particular to the selected preferred provider Play World Systems, this is just basically showing details of, if you will, of the materials, of the warranty, the decking, the plastic materials that has a 15-year warranty, and then, the, basically all the metal components have a lifetime warranty, metal posts, lamps, the hardware and such. And then, this Play World system has a, is dedicated to kind of a, a green, over 90% of their production waste is recycled. They have eliminated PVC, almost, almost all of it, it's like 99.999 of PVC eliminated from, from their production that related to health issues associated with emissions, and also, a high percentage of their materials is made from recycled materials, and then almost all the components are almost 100% recyclable, so at the end of its service life, almost everything can be recycled. The NSP3 proposal includes purchase, as mentioned, of the precast concrete cow and the hay bales, and the small hop rocks from a, a small vendor in Redding called Universal Precast Concrete. These items are identified as non-CMAS in the quote that's attached to the staff report. Per the city's purchasing policy, usually, three written quotes are typically required for purchases such as that. After checking just about everybody else in the internet, come to find out, these are about the only people who make a concrete cow, and so, we're asking that pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 3400, that the council approval include the purchase of these items as unique and only available from one vendor source as part of, and that's included in the, in the $73,000 purchase price. The preferred proposal was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission on November 18th, and the commission concurred with staff's preferred proposal. In terms of insulation, staff will go to Goodland, who is a certified playground installer, and get a quote for the insulation of this playground equipment if the council chooses to accept staff's recommendation. The monies for the playground were included in the CIP budget for the Walker Community Park, and as you can see in your staff report, that the, it's estimated that the costs, including insulation, are, what's been budgeted is adequate to deliver the project. With that, that concludes my presentation. I tried to make it as fast as I could, given the time. Voish Jeffrey is also available if we have any additional questions.
Questions or comments by council?
I have one. Do we know if the, the products that, that we'd be purchasing are produced here in the United States? One thing that stuck out to me in the staff report was the page where Play World was trumpeting their, their attention to green matters, but under pallets, it says manufactured using 100% hardwood lumber, meeting the standards established by the USDA Foreign Agriculture Are these being manufactured in another country and brought, brought into the United
I'm aware of that they're manufactured in Pennsylvania.
Okay.
It's possibly that, that particular is addressing the importation of wood for the creation of pallets, but the, as I understand, that Play World is headquartered, and their manufacturing is in Pennsylvania.
Any other comments by council?
I'm president.
None? Ask for a motion.
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and no further discussion. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks for all your hard work. That was me, just saying thanks for all your work. Next item, please. We have communications?
Oh, communications.
Was there communications from staff or council? If none, we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Okay. Board members, Kane here? Kane?
Here.
Flair? Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
I just mixed them up, waking you guys up.
You did, you did, you did.
Waking everyone up.
Okay. Public comment?
I have no speaker seats.
Okay, we'll do the consent, and then we'll go to the other items we moved.
Okay, on the consent, we have number one, minutes of the meeting of November 17th, 2009. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. Number three, acceptance of the treasures report for the period ending October 2009. Number four, 2008-2009 Annual Report of Financial Transactions of Community Redevelopment Agencies. Number five, Annual Activity Report for Fiscal Year 2008-2009 for the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Galt, which was moved.
Okay.
From the regular calendar, sorry.
Okay. So, is there any comments?
I would, I would ask our finance department, didn't she have some comments on the audit on the redevelopment?
I do. Um, I don't believe that was on the consent calendar, though, under the Department of the Knowledge.
Yeah, this is number nine under the regular calendar.
Right.
Oh, yes. I will certainly address it during that, or I could address it right now.
We were going to do the consent first.
Okay.
A, B, C, D, and then move.
And then, okay. And number nine is, comes after the finance department under regular calendar. That's when we have requests for additional funds for the construction of the Lincoln Way Parking Lot Project that's yet to come.
But before us now is the...
Just the consent.
Redevelopment consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion or call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Now, we've had two items pulled.
Yes, well, under Department Report. Under Department Report, our first item is under the Finance Department, Redevelopment Agency of the City of Galt Components, Unit Basic Financial Statements for the year ended June 30, 2009.
Come out now.
Thank you. This evening, well, first of all, I'd like to advise council that there was a revised staff report that was distributed this evening right before the start of the council meeting, and I will address the change within the report during my presentation. But as presented by city clerk, staff is recommending that the board accept the Redevelopment Agency Component Unit Basic Financial Statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2009. And the redevelopment agency, the financial statements were also incorporated within the city's comprehensive annual financial report, so I won't go into the financial information at this point unless council or the board has any questions. But I do want to bring to your attention that the, there were three findings that were noted, and the staff report originally said there were none, even though the findings were included within the report, and staff's responses were in the report as well, the staff report was an error in that I had said there were no findings, and in fact, there were three. So, I would like to present those three items to the board's attention. The first item was basically that the redevelopment agency should submit various reports, those being the BLIT report, the loan report, and property report to the State Comptroller's Office, as well as to the agency board before December 31st, 2000, or of each fiscal year, within six months of the close of the fiscal year. This did not occur in the fiscal year ending June 2008, so it should have been presented to the board by December 31st, 2008. That did not occur. Staff has prepared the required information, and in fact, that was being moved to the agenda this evening, and that was prepared by the Community Development Department, and so they will be presenting a separate staff report to address that finding. Oh, you just approved it under consent? Okay. My mistake. Sorry, this agenda. The second item was that the redevelopment agency should submit a monitor Housing Affordability Report. Basically, property owners and managers should submit an annual report to the agency, and that report has been completed, but it was not submitted to the board for acceptance. So, basically, there is a note that the staff will submit that information to the board for acceptance in the future. And the third comment was that the redevelopment agency should produce an implementation plan for the project area every five years, and as the board is aware of the information that there was delay to the litigation that had occurred based on the Redevelopment Plan Amendment that happened in 2007, once the dispute was resolved, which was just last year in November 2008, then work efforts were initiated, and so, we expect that that work product will be presented to the board probably next month.
Should be next month.
So, shortly at the beginning of the next calendar year. So, with that, there is no financial impact with the action, other than that the information will be incorporated within budget documents. So, unless the board has any questions, again, of me, staff, or the independent auditor, we would ask for your acceptance this evening.
No comments, so we'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. No comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Department, request for additional funds for the construction of the Lincoln Way Parking Lot Project.
Who's going to give that?
Did you pull it?
I did pull it.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did.
I just, I pulled this item tonight so that we could get some background information from staff. I've already talked to Greg about, about what led to this request, but I've had some questions from members of the community, so I'd like to give Greg an opportunity to, to lay out the facts that led to this situation.
Again, the initial fact that led to the need to come back and ask council for more funds is that we didn't ask for these funds in conjunction with the original... more funds is that we didn't ask for these funds in conjunction with the original, uh, project contract award. Typically, we like going forward with a ten percent contingency, particularly on small projects, ten percent of product is not nearly as much on this project as it was standing at Central Interchange, that would have been about twenty-two thousand dollars. At that point, we went ahead and went forward with only sixty-two hundred dollars in available contingency, thinking that might be enough, we might squeak by, sometimes we don't use the full ten percent, and made the decision to, at that point, come back to council if we needed additional money when we actually needed it, rather than encumber funds that we might not need. Um, following the startup construction, we had a number of unforeseen issues that had come up, they're, they're identified in the staff report in detail, I'll go with them. Basically, once we got started on the, on the project, in talking with the property owner, there was an opportunity to widen the usable area a little bit more, widen some of the fences out to make them align, which gave us use of additional space that was not included in the original design. This allowed for an additional five parking spaces to be added to the parking lot. Of course, we had to do some additional grading, increase the area of paving, uh, needed more base, those kind of things. Uh, there was a unknown shallow water service that came diagonally across the vacant lot, no one knew it was there, provided service to the existing building, it was not connected to the water meter that was right in front of the building. There was a relocation. Uh, the biggest, uh, hit that we took was, uh, unsuitable materials. When we started excavating, we, the contractor found three very large clay deposits on the site that was a wet, slimy clay, clay material that despite his efforts, uh, we, we required that he overestimate, scarify, and never to dry the material out, and then recompact it. Uh, extensive work was done, unfortunate materials, what they call unsuitable, was not compactable, it's like trying to, to compact mush, you pound it down in one area and it pops up another area. Our only solution was either bring in a line treatment process, or to hog the material out and bring in aggregate base, that was a cheaper alternative, that was eighty-four hundred dollars. Um, also, we found out, once we started the project, that some of the water services that were supposed to have been put in quite some time ago were not actually there. And so there was another thousand dollars that we're estimating it will take to retrofit the existing landscape service, we're actually gonna be tying into another water service and splitting it, um, to provide the actual service for the parking lot landscaping. Uh, we did look at some additional savings, though. Um, we had a two thousand dollar credit, we overestimated what the materials test, uh, testing was gonna cost, we realized a two thousand dollar savings there. Um, we have also done quite a bit of work, uh, by my, my own staff, we hauled off a lot of material that property was gonna take, in an effort to try to minimize some of the work we're probably gonna be doing, the, uh, water meter tie-in and through the contractor, we've asked for money here because we haven't quite got that worked out yet. All total, um, we've used the existing contingency of sixty-two hundred dollars plus an additional seventy-eight hundred. Uh, we're asking for additional appropriation of ten thousand dollars, that will leave us a balance of twenty-one hundred dollars to carry off the rest of the project. Uh, we anticipate that this will be enough, but, you know, the, the digging is done, we got the pipe in the ground, we don't anticipate what else might come up. But these are things, there's no, we had no way of knowing that the clay existed, we had no way of knowing that the water line was where it was.
Thank you. My, my objection to, to the request tonight doesn't stem from any of the unforeseen, uh, issues that have come up, I think they're all understandable. But I don't wanna be adding to the scope of the project, which is, is what we're looking at doing tonight, by adding additional spaces to coordinate fence, fence lines and, I wasn't a, I wasn't supportive of utilizing the funding in the first place to construct the project, because I didn't think it benefited enough, enough members of the community. And my, my objection still stands under those same premises. So I, I don't see the need to expand the scope, we've already got what the council determined to be an adequate amount of parking spaces for the downtown area.
Greg, with the, uh, additional five that we've talked about, what, what's our total spaces? What would be the total spaces available from the lot?
Total of thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Yes.
Thirty-two.
Were any of those gonna be added as handicap or ADA to meet ADA?
No, we already had adequate number of ADA. These are actually parallel parking spaces, uh, we added some additional width, and so they're not, not germane, we had an area that was not wide enough for hand, or for parallel parking, so we've added, uh, three parallel and two straight in parking, but just regular parking stalls.
Greg, we may have talked about it before, but refresh my memory, uh, with thirty-two spaces, especially the spaces in the back, keeping the other spaces in the front open, uh, have we thought about going back and considering marking some of these spaces as employee parking only for the businesses there?
I don't believe this would be, I'm not aware of any discussion of making them employee only, uh.
Is that a possibility? I know I talked about it with somebody, maybe it wasn't you, but is that something we would want to consider even at this late date?
I would. Actually, we talked with a lot of the business owners, encouraged their employees to not park there, to leave that open for the patrons of the businesses and other people there, and encouraged them to park out on B Street, for example, where they could walk. And, uh, and most of them are doing that right now, because they don't wanna take up the valuable spaces for their customers.
Okay. I knew we'd talked about it, just didn't remember how we, how it come out, okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Now I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve, uh, but I would comment before I do that, that, uh, in talking to the business people in the area, that was their biggest need, uh, at least in their mind, was additional parking. And I think the addition of five extra parking places is, is well worth it. And with that, I will move to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay. Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And seconded, further discussion, none? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next item?
Just quick reminders, um.
Okay.
Uh, December fourth, Friday night, the holiday tree lighting, six-thirty at the Littleton Community Center.
Why was this adjourned and reconvened to Galt City Council? Now, go ahead, you don't have to repeat all that now.
Um, just a reminder for council, lighting in the night parade, December fifth, um, at, meeting at five o'clock. Galt Market, okay. Um, on December seventh, the Galt City Council Youth Committee meeting, six P M. in the City Hall Community Room. On December ninth, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, seven P M. in the council chambers. December tenth, the planning commission meeting, six-thirty in the council chambers, which brings us to our next city council meeting. That's all I have, thanks.
Okay, comments by staff?
Just, just, uh, reminder that we do have our employee recognition dinner coming up on the eighteenth, if you haven't got your RSVPs in, and you're gonna be in town, please do so.
Believe I have mine in.
Good. Uh, any other comments from staff?
Just wanted to maybe by telling you, you guys some good news, we are in constant daily contact with the folks of the revolving fund loan, we have done everything we had, our, our application is complete, it's now being processed for final approval. It, we may hear this week, we may hear next week. Keep your fingers crossed.
That we shall.
Okay, comments by council members, Vice Mayor Payne?
I would just, um, mention that the youth committee will have their annual crafting messana on Sunday from one to three. They will also be approaching the city, uh, with an idea to interview the departments on any programs that they have, uh, involving the youth, such as mentoring. That's something they're looking forward to, seeing how our government works. And I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll have a cold parade, I'm sure.
Hopefully, dry.
That'll be nice, yeah. Thank you.
Well, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, and I encourage everybody to come out for the annual holiday tree lighting and the parade on Saturday. Um, I think it's gonna be a, a quick month, it's gonna go by quickly, but I ask that everybody be careful out there and drive safely and, uh, stay in packs, this is the season. Uh, and I wish everybody a great holiday. So, that's it for me.
Councilmember Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let the council know that I, last week, I met with SMUD board member Bill Slaton to discuss several green energy concepts working their way through SMUD. One of the projects that we talked about specifically was the, uh, solar energy project that's being constructed out of aeroget. That mon, that project is being funded in a roundabout way through a rate subsidy that SMUD is providing, that the, the rate payers in SMUD's jurisdiction have financed through a two cent surcharge on their utility bills over the years. So this is essentially going to help SMUD meet their green energy guidelines for two thousand thirty-two. Also, wanted to let the council know that at the next meeting, I will be putting an item on the agenda regarding the advertisement of the California First Solar Financing Program. Uh, I wanna, what I want council to do is to come up with a way, and I'll work on this over the next couple of weeks with Jason, come up with a way to advertise the program in its initial stages, so that we can create a contact list, so that when the program is actually implemented and financed through the state, we have a ready waiting list of residents in the community that want to be part of the program. So initially, I would just like to have Jason or Liz put together a brief outline of the program that we're attempting to participate in, and include that in our newsletter that we send out in the next, in the next cycle.
I was asking, when, when were, when is?
Mid-process.
Is it?
They're already cutting articles, 'cause we've got too much.
Okay. When are we sending it out?
Uh, first of January?
Yeah, it goes to the printer next week.
And the next one would be first of April?
The first week of January.
And the next one?
First of April.
April.
Right, three months, every, every three months, yeah.
And we also get it on our website.
Yeah, we could put it on the website.
Okay, but we'll talk about some ideas over the next couple of weeks, and present something at the next meeting. The only other thing that I had tonight, uh, for the parade, I was going to do a cart for the parade like the other council members were, but last year, we did that with, with the kids that were riding with me, my, my three children, really wasn't a safe situation. So I had asked Voice earlier today if, if there was a flatbed trailer that was available. Voice told me that there was, and I talked to Jason about it, but everyone thought it was prudent to come back to council and just verify that I was gonna be using that for the parade. Okay? It was my pickup. I won't be driving the city truck, so, okay?
Cool, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank, I wanna just thank everyone for being so patient with, uh, all of us tonight, and staff, thank you, public, and we'll see everyone during the Christmas break. We will adjourn at, right before eleven, ten fifty-seven.
Just in time.
Just in time. Yeah, normally I would.
Yeah, no, we made it.